By the board, that will be, the discussion will center around any recommendation to the board of selectmen. Then we have three pending applications, Rundle Farm Stand, Rundle Machine, and R2 Run Dog Daycare. We will have other business and then adjourn.
Yay.
I move that we approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay.
Motion second. Comment? Home favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Approval of minutes from April twenty fifth. I wasn't at that meeting. Do we have a forum of those that were? Okay, we have to put it off. So, since we don't have a forum of people that were at the April twenty fifth meeting, we're going to have to postpone. Yeah, the approval of those minutes. Third item on the agenda is citizen comment. If anybody has anything they would like to bring forth towards the board that is not already an item on the agenda, this is your time to do so. Seeing nobody, we'll move along into the public hearings. So, as I mentioned, we've got seven proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. What we'll do is, I'll, I'll read out what each one of them are. We will open up the public hearing. We'll give Tad a minute or so to sort of describe what the proposed change was, in some cases, why that change has been brought forth, and we'll move along from there. Item one, revision to land use ordinance thirteen point two and amendment to the land use map to transfer Hidden Meadows subdivision from the BI district to the R two district.
Yes, essentially, the Hidden Meadows subdivision is currently located in the BI district, and the BI district does not allow residential development. This was supposed to probably be moved years and years and years ago, but never was, and so this is an opportunity at this point to do what should have been done a long time ago, and that is essentially to move that, that residential subdivision back into the R two district. We already have, and it intrudes across the trail essentially into the BI district. We have another area that does the same thing, and that's Bass Lane. That area as well is an extension or an extrusion into the BI district. That was changed into a, an R two. And so essentially, this, the intent of this is to make it an R two district as it should be. The map shows the extent of the change, and the description gives a description of the actual lots and the parameters for that change. And then, assuming that it does in fact go through town meeting, then we'll change the land use map.
We will open the public hearing for
Hallie.
For the land use ordinance thirteen point two amendment and transfer of Hidden Meadows from the BI to the R two at, what is that, seven oh seven? Seeing no public comment, we will close it at seven oh seven. Item two, adoption of land use ordinance nine point three point six, commercial husbandry, commercial animal husbandry farms and associated definitions to be added to land use ordinance three point two.
Essentially, right now, commercial animal husbandry is limited to five animal units in all residential districts. Five animal units is defined as being one thousand pounds of animal, which means they have maybe three cows or four cows, depending on what they are. They have, oh, twenty-five hundred chickens. It's based on weight, and that way, animal unit weight is effective in determining grazing and carrying capacity, but it's not very good at regulating how much, how many animals can occur within a district. So, it's very limited for commercial purposes in the residential districts. The Complimentary Planning Committee and the Planning Board sat down and hammered this out for a long period of time, starting after, probably in February, I believe it was. Actually, it was January, and completed it at the end of April, and came up with an alternative to this in which commercial animal husbandry can infect one that would be viable, one that could be sustainable, one that could actually be maybe even profitable. It provided the methodology and the definitions necessary for such an operation to occur within the residential districts. It essentially gives density calculations and enforcement of it over to the main Department of Agriculture as they usually do, are involved in any kind of commercial animal operation. So, basically, it takes it off the town's back and puts it on to the state's back.
We'll open the public hearing for the commercial animal husbandry farms revisions at seven ten. See no con- oh, sorry. We'll go down in the back.
I just had a sentence issue, our very first paragraph, our first definition, last sentence, animal shall be R, husbandry buildings. I think we can get rid of the R.
Actually, please, I failed to do that with Doc. I know you guys, state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm in charge of the history department. I know that this board spent a lot of time in late two thousand seventeen and the first half of two thousand eighteen working on animal husbandry, or animal husbandry ordinance that will address end farming in the residential districts, be it a so-called hobby farm or a commercial unit that was withdrawn from the town meeting because of an oversight by someone at the town, the need to file the necessary proposal with the State Department of Agriculture, I believe. There was also a lot of public outrage out at, I believe, due to misinformation than anything else. I attended almost all the meetings that the planning board and the comprehensive planning committees had. I missed the important one, however, which was when it was decided to skip over everything but this narrowly defined, what is the term, or C A F, I know it's the acronym. The, the, the commercial animal husbandry. So, I, I've got some issues just with the definition. When discussions have, had always been about something measurable revenue, when the proposition was to look at at net income, it was decided that it's not appropriate for the planning board of the town in general to look into someone's tax records, which I agree with wholeheartedly. So, this begs the question, fifteen thousand of annual revenues, annual, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand of net annual revenues, is that supposed to be on a generally accepted accounting basis? Is that supposed to be based on tax return? Is that un-audited cash flow? I, I think that that is a, quite frankly, a very bad definition. I also would ask the town planner, if he's still here, I'm sorry, my neck doesn't work, if you want to know. How, how many operations in town do you think are going to meet this standard of fifteen thousand a year of net annual revenues in the residential districts? One or more than one?
I'm not sure. I don't know. One that I know of that would probably do it. I don't know about the future.
You don't know about any of them? Just one?
I just know of one right now in the residential districts. And the residential districts are defined as R one, two, and three.
I, I know what they are.
I'm just doing it for everybody else.
They, they, the, the, I've got a conceptual problem with, I, I believe, I know who the one, the one farmer is that Tad referred to. I very much would like him to be able to increase his operation, but I've got a problem with the board adopting regulations that appear to be for the benefit of a single individual. Just a philosophical problem. Going down to the designation criteria, table nine point three point six dash one, I see that that there is a seventy-five foot setback of feeding and grazing areas from a water supply well on any property. But immediately below that, setback of manure storage and composting sites, that there is a one hundred and fifty foot from neighboring residences. There is seventy-five foot from property line, but there is no setback from a water supply for manure storage. That seems like an oversight to me. Then we get to something I've repeatedly asked about in section four, A two, where it talks about manure management. This is a requirement to get a permit. The applicant supplies the board with a nutrient management plan for disposal and or composting for accumulated manure from the confined spaces. I have asked the town planner on multiple occasions, who, other than the United States Department of Agriculture, prepares nutrient management plans? I've Googled it. I've tried to find anybody that does, and I haven't found anymore. Now, maybe there's some other operation, but until somebody tells me that there are licensed nutrient management planners, which is a thing, as I found looking at the main Department of Agriculture website, if the USDA is the only source of a nutrient management plan, you cannot even apply for a grant to get one until you have thirty animal units, which is thirty thousand pounds of animals. So, if you have twenty-nine animal units, but you have a commercial operation, you can't get a nutrient management plan. But this requires one. I, I will also point out that the state nutrient management requirements are if a farm has fifty or more annual animal units, that's fifty thousand, or over one hundred tons of manure stored. Now, manure is wicked heavy, but a hundred tons is a lot of manure. And the third situation where there would be a requirement for a nutrient management plan is a complaint about, about manure storage. So, I, I thought that the planning board and comprehensive planning committee had decided that they were going to not make those requirements based upon whatever they attempted to come up with, but instead fall back on state guidelines. So, I, I have to ask the obvious question. If, if, why is a nutrient management plan being required when no one can tell me where to get one, and, and this is not consistent at all with what's published on the main Department of Agriculture website about when you need a nutrient management plan? I have other things, but I'm going to leave it at that.
Yeah, the nutrient management plan, there's the nutrient management plan, and there's a nutrient management plan. Confined space agriculture is a lot different than it is, as you well know, from, from dealing field grown. It's usually high intensity, and it's basically going to be something that's regulated by the state, especially if you start getting larger numbers of animal units. And the board's just looking for that, a copy of whatever management plan the owner has with the state of Maine Department of Agriculture.
But if the owner isn't required by the state of Maine to have a plan, why is the town requiring a plan?
Well, the only reason, the only thing the town wants is what the state provides, just a copy of the same thing.
That's not what this says.
It says a nutrient, a nutrient management plan. It could be just say, this is what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to put this much manure within our concrete pit. It's going to have these dimensions. We're going to turn it X number of times. That would be a nutrient management plan for us. It would not be the USDA management plan. It would be something the board would have as, as a guideline as to what, how they're going to dispose of the manure, how they're going to manage the manure from such a confined space.
So, clearly, Tad has a, an idea in his head in terms of what his expectation is of a management plan. But from your perspective, if you were reading this document, what would you add and how would you phrase it so that a neophyte coming to this document could possibly figure out what exactly he or she needed in order to get the, the town's closing?
I would modify this section, number two, to say that a capital letters nutrient management plan needs to be provided when required by the guideline of the Maine Department of Agriculture.
And does that say enough, Ted?
Sure. I would say, I mean, basically, what it says above are the minimum areas and, and all that. That's the density standards specified by the Maine Department of Agriculture best management practices, of which the National Organic Standards Board Livestock Committee Stocking Density is one of the references they use in the best management practices. So, it can be either that standard or any of the other ones that they have, the livestock density in confined spaces. The best management plans, as, as you saw, is actually a list, is actually a very huge list of references to studies and standards in other states by other institutions, the Department of Iowa and so forth. So, that's, that's what we have for best management plan and plans, and so we do whatever the Department of Agriculture requires in those circumstances.
Hi, my name's Dewey Giles. I live forty, about fifty road. Do environmental consulting, which is kind of eerie. If the town wants to follow main statute, all you need to do is refer to, we shall do this per the main revised statute, section, 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 section. That way, it's very explicit. So, everybody can review that statute, and we, as a town, can vote on that rather than it be, when you say that we just want to follow what the state of Maine does, what we need to do is reference specific statutes, and so that we all understand explicitly what it is that the town expects the residents to follow, those guidelines. So, it's actually very easy. You could actually just put whatever, you know, whatever main statute it is you're referencing to and just say, we propose to follow so-and-so as per the main revised statute specific to this. It's actually very easy.
Would be a statute or a reg of some type?
Well, there's statutes, and, 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 Charles, right, there is a statute that specifies that you should do this, and the department makes a rule, as they have in the rulemaking, that you shall have followed the best management practices book, which is...
So, just put it in?
That's, that's why we put, why we can reference that, but we also reference the best management practices handbook. Just like DEP has their best management practices handbook, but so does, so does Department of Agriculture.
But you have to explicitly say, if we're going to make this part of town law, people have to be able to follow the, even guidelines. Guidelines are just guidelines. They're not, they're, they're not the rule of law. They're there to help you comply with the law. So, just make it easier. If, if the town wants to say, the intent is to make, to make the town follow what the state requires, then just state the statute, and then we can all vote on it. It's very clear. That way, there's no ambiguity. There's no haziness, I basically say. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I do want to make one other point about the definition of, which I didn't get any response on. I, I do think that the term net annual revenue is extremely vague, but it, it's followed by or at least forty percent of the household income of the farmer, which is a revenue basis, not a net income basis. Which seems odd, but...
Well, I could tell you, Chip, that, that this was a topic of great discussion among the combined boards, and this is the compromise that we've arrived at.
Can we just go back to statutes for a second? So, Dewey, rather than listing the specific statutes, I think, I think what we were all trying to do is to leave it non-specific enough to take in any kind of changes, revisions, deletions, additions, and things like that. So, I think rather than state chapter and verse for all the statutes, we can say the current statutes that, you know, govern these particular activities, operations, and whatever, as, as set forth by the state of Maine. And that is actually leaves us enough room that as things change, we're not bound by, you know, a specific numerical statute that may no longer exist or could have been modified and isn't really relevant, obviously.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent. The point was, is that it was conveyed that the town wants to follow what the state of Maine agricultural department wants to do, and if we want to do that verbatim, then we can just do that. And I agree with you for that. You know, to just pass it off to the state, I don't think is important. That was the point of my making this. If that's what the town wants to do, then just reference the statute. I'm not saying that I would agree with that, but I don't, just passing it off to the state and do what the state does, if the town, if that's what's being proposed by the town, then just follow the statute. You follow me?
Yes, I follow you, and then, you know, the, the town didn't want to reinvent the wheel just for the town. And so, it, it, it seemed logical, at least this is what I was thinking, to use the state of Maine and its statutes, rules, and regulations as a default, so to speak, and a place that was established, established rule that we could easily point to, that seems to be accepted practice in the state. And so, you know, we spent a lot of time, you can't imagine how much time we spent, just talking about home occupations and trying to come up with definitions and looking at other places and other towns. And I know this seems like a tangent, and actually, there is a purpose. But, so rather than end up having the town take all these, you know, tangents, setways, we look to the state of Maine to kind of give us some kind of format.
Okay, so it's not that we're just going to follow what the state of Maine does, so we're just going to use that as a guideline?
Well, that was my impression of what we were trying to do, is to give us sort of an overlay, I know Chip hates that word, but sort of a construct
Okay, fair enough.
that seems to be accepted to practice in the state. And so, we can, that way, if somebody comes to us and say, says, well, I think this is onerous, or I think, you know, you're off the wall, or whatever, then we can say, well, this is accepted practice with the state of Maine, and your activities seem to fall within within the, these definitions, and consequently, we're going to, you know, defer to the state of Maine in, in terms of what you need to do to govern those activities. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you for clarifying.
At the risk of stating obvious, this section A two does not accomplish what was just discussed in terms of falling back on the State Department of Agriculture publications and guidelines, et cetera.
And why is that, Chip? Why doesn't it work? And how would you make it work?
I, I, as I said, I would say that a nutrient management plan, initial capitals nutrient management plan is a an industry term, and it is, and would be required when required by the Maine Department of Agriculture.
Okay, and I think all of us wrote down what you wrote, and with the idea that we might adopt that as a, you know, further definition of what we were trying to accomplish. So...
Thank you.
Can I actually just ask the, sort of, process question?
Sure.
So, Stacy, just to what Susan said, it sounds as though this, the point of this public hearing is that what is being put forth here is not necessarily what's going to make it to the town meeting. They're made, this is an opportunity for enhancements, revisions, clarifications to be made. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct statement. Given the time, to be honest with you, one of the reasons that we didn't finish the, the family or what we call family farm, animal farm, is because we ran out of time. We have a very limited amount of time that we have, we have available in order to do the advertising, make the revisions. So, we, we won't have enough time to do it in time. So, we went ahead with this, and if we do change this and if it agrees with, with the public, then we will probably not make town meeting.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
We probably don't have enough time.
But there will be another town meeting.
So, it won't, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to go forward ever and continually, in the event that this discussion reveals that there might be additions. Okay, thank you.
Right, after the public hearing, we will go through each of these, one by one, and decide whether...
Right.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thank you for the comment.
In regards, in regards to the legislation, you have to be very, very careful.
Please, you know who you are. Thank you.
Diane Robbins. I sit on the complaint committee. In regards to the legislation, you have to be very careful about... In regards to the legislation, you have to be very careful about stating specific statutes or specific portions of the law. I know I deal with it every day at work and they change them. They move them, they change them, they put them in a different area, they change their number. What we don't wanna get into is, we really don't wanna get into putting something so specific that every time something gets changed, we have to go in and change the land use regulations. The other thing is, we wanna be very careful about how you word it. You cannot put current, because if you put in current, if they make any changes, then that portion of the land use regulation isn't any good.
Well, if we can find a synonym that means...
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying to be, we just have to be very careful because current is, when you're talking about legislation, is, the two of them really just don't go together.
Well, we'll find a synonym.
Right, but just, yeah.
That sort of, you know, makes it...
Right, but for people that wanna understand why we didn't make it so ultra-specific, that's, those are some of the reasons, is that you can't make it so specific that every time the cha- state changes something or every time a word changes, we have to take it back to town meeting. And during that period of time, between the time they decide to change it, we get it to town meeting, it turns into, I hate to say it, turns into kind of a free-for-all. Cause people are saying, "Okay, well, now your land use regulation is not in compliance, they've changed the legislation and now you don't have any rules to stop me from doing what I wanna do." So we just, we had to kinda toe the line as to how we were gonna do it, but not make it so that we had to come back to the town every three months when something changed.
Before you walked in, that was the discussion we just had.
Okay.
So, um, great minds think alike, so to speak.
All right, Dan?
Diane DuBois, um, I, I have an issue with, the first thing that Chip brought up, fifteen thousand net annual revenue. I mean, I don't think it's the board or the planners or the court enforcement officers purging to know what these, these folks make, you know, and, you know, you don't, when you look at the different businesses in time, you get your different levels. You, you identify those by square footers, not by how much money they make. And I just, I have a hard time with that. I don't take that for me.
So, and by all...
Yeah, I mean, we, we rattle with this a long time.
The, the intent of that, from my perspective, was to delineate between a, you know, bona fide commercial operation versus a hobby type farm. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Which is what we had, we weren't able to wait for in the time.
And, and that is, you know, as you, as you think about the particulars of that, that, that became a very difficult delineation to make. And I don't, I don't recall that I was a part of coming up with that number and that language, but that was, that was essentially one of the topics, uh, one of the ways that you could say, you know, "This is how you're gonna do it now." And my guess is that TAD nor the code enforcement officer is gonna go looking to dig into people's financial statements to understand that, but there's gotta be some measure of how you're going to go from a hobby farm to a legitimate commercial farm.
Goes right now, Dan, what we have is, it says, "If you have any commercial profit from what you're doing,"
Right.
"you are a commercial animal husbandry operation." And that means if you sell a dozen eggs on the side of the road, suddenly you're now an animal husbandry operation.
Right.
And so we had to find some sort of threshold to do it.
So, and you couldn't use gross as opposed to net?
You could use gross, yeah.
Cause you know, a, a net figure can mean anything. By the time you get to the net net, by the time you put in all your expenses for a small business, you know, it, it ceases to have meaning. So maybe gross is better than net.
No, I think we had that discussion.
We had a discussion a lot.
We had that, we had a huge discussion about it.
Well, it's just that net, you can play with net all over the place. I mean, you have expenses and things like that and...
The, the other issue was, and you had mentioned that, you know, either TAD or, or JAM or you're gonna go look at finances, but if somebody comes up and says, "Hey, you know, why is this guy over here licensed at that?" And you've got, somebody's gotta go look at this. Somebody's gotta go back to this individual and say, "Show me your net, show me your gross, show me your tax," whatever it is.
Why aren't you subject to that?
Yeah, so, you know, it's not, I understand, it's not an easy thing to figure out.
Right.
And I don't know if maybe, you know, you know, square footage, it's kinda hard to put square footage on this, but...
Especially if you have confined space. It really changes when you have the confined space animal husbandry, where you have like a chicken bar, a very small amount of space, you can raise a lot of chickens. And so space didn't really work for us either in that situation. And, and...
Oh, Chip, uh, we have a, another commenter, so...
Kevin Allen with Westro. Um, you also include forty percent household income, so if I'm selling eggs, any of my only source of income, cause I'm retired, I would fall under this. So it just opens you up for another, you know, just a new, you know, as somebody mentioned, the new setback for the storage from wells, um, by being seventy-five feet from the property line, it has to be at least seventy-five feet from the well. But I would think that some retired person making three hundred dollars a year being under some, something, it seems like a nuisance.
Thank you. Chip?
My point about the well was that the farmer himself might have a well and might not have the common sense to, if it's, if it were more than seventy-five feet in his well. And perhaps the planning board or the comprehensive planning committee decided that was his problem, but...
It would be other people's problem, probably, I think.
I'm sure we'll have some continued discussion on that. Any other, um...
You could say seventy-five feet from any well, so...
But also on that seventy-five foot mark, if you remember correctly, we were trying to use one guideline as of a, as a hundred per se, but then it was under some farm management that somebody brought up, it states that it's seventy-five feet. I mean, it's not something we had come out with the number, but this was already, um, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name.
It's a state...
And that's what, and I'm thinking Chip has, has probably brought up a good point about a, a well within the property and that if it was, if that standard is seventy-five feet from a, from it in a flooding well, that we, we kept it at the property line, assuming that you would have more than that to an flooding well.
I, I don't think we're thinking necessarily about the farmer who wasn't thinking about his maneuver storage being close to his own well.
I could've sworn there was something in there about seventy-five feet from any well.
I, I don't think any...
It's for, it's for a feeding and grazing area, is noted with, with that, with the well.
That's easily fixed.
It's the composting sites.
Yep. Any additional public comment on the commercial animal husbandry farms ordinance? See you none, we'll close this public hearing at seven forty-one and we'll open the amendments to land use ordinance, urban six point one, urban residential district R one. Ted?
And going over home occupations, the, the boards were very concerned about making some distinctions between home occupations since they've changed so much over the years.
Oh, Ted, I think you have skipped to item four. We're still on item three, amendments to land use ordinance six point one, urban residential.
Amendments to urban residential district R one, um, what the board did is they looked very closely at R one, uh, cause R one has, in the comprehensive plan, it's supposed to be, as the name implies, urban residential, it's supposed to be high density, one acre zone, um, and, uh, the concern with some of the uses that were in that district might not be compatible with residential development and that kind of dancing. And so the board took a very hard look at, uh, what was in the ordinance and what would be appropriate and what would not be appropriate. Um, and you will note that there are many changes, you'll note on your sheets that those that are struck out are those items that were deleted and those that were added are underlined. So that would be a good idea. For instance, we got rid of directional facilities, we got rid of a, um, a number of uses like that that really aren't appropriate for this kind of residential district. We also got, we also eliminated a number of, um, uses that are associated with the shoreline zoning that, um, that we were required initially to put into our, our districts when we had, uh, our different format. And when we had basically our uses based on a, a grid, a base, a, a matrix. And so when we enumerated them, this enabled us to get rid of comments like being able to have a timber road or to, to have a soil conservation activities as being a permitted use. So we, we, we could eliminate a lot of the extraneous material that would be, that was already being covered in other districts, so. Um, and, um, that's, I mean, you'll notice it there, I think you'll see commercial animal husbandry as a conditional use in there. You have to rethink that and what happens if the board considers this.
Comment?
Um, I can, um, I, I don't see commercial animal husbandry on the list.
Oh, we didn't see... As, as a conditional use that animal husbry, husbandry of five or less is listed.
Right, but that's not commercial animal husbandry.
Right.
I don't think we'd like to add it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what we did, yeah. Yeah, we'll take that up in our discussion. Okay, Chip, did I see your hand raised? Uh, or maybe not?
Yes, but please let someone else talk first.
So I guess my question is, are we not allowed to drive in the R one district anymore? If we crossed out thirteen, we can't have motorized vehicular traffic on existing roads?
Um, what we're doing is we're taking that out because that's kind of, that's kind of, that's what's required in the shoreline zoning regulations. And when we were required to follow the state shoreline zoning regulations, since we have a matrix system
Yeah.
that went across all the zones, we had to put that in the land use.
So that's gonna be removed from all the other zones that's written in at some other point?
Yes, because it's, it's obvious, you know, it's an obvious thing.
It does seem...
But in the shoreline zone, it's not so obvious. The shoreline zone, those are sensitive areas in which you have to enumerate exactly what kind of activities you can do. In regular residential districts or business districts, these, these are activities we do by...
You put in a setting system like getting ten yards of filth and getting cut down a tree and put it in the lawn.
Exactly, yeah. And that's, but see, those are the restrictions that are required, we are required to put in, into the shoreline zoning districts.
Now, Ted is...
Which is one reason why we went away from the matrix system.
Was, there's bound to be some shoreline zoning districts
Yes.
within our one area, but so they're, those activities are covered under that overlay.
Yeah, that, that is an overlay district.
Right.
And it supersedes what's underneath.
You made a decision, Chip?
Yes, I, 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 I am confused as to how one harvests timber without a land management road. Is it the same argument as that, that land management road should just automatically okay wherever one wants to put one? Or shouldn't that be a permitted use if you are going to harvest timber? Cause it's kinda hard to do without a road.
Well, that's included in the, in, on the standards form harvesting, timber harvesting of the town of Lark.
What is?
Timber management road.
Well, it used to be explicitly a permitted use here and now you're taking it away.
I'm taking it out because it's, it's already covered. As I said, it was basically when we moved to the specific use of format instead of the matrix format, we didn't need this anymore. We had to have it as part of our shoreline zoning. I couldn't put that in, we couldn't put it in the matrix and not, and only, only have it apply across to the, uh, to the shoreline zoning and then not put some, put an X or a, or a C or a P in commercial or residential districts. So that is, so that's an associated use. It's like saying, "Well, we, we should put driveways in, we should put potted plants in, we should put vegetation, swing sets," you know? Those are all, for instance, all those things I just mentioned are all associated uses with a single-family home, right? They don't specify all, every single thing of those. So same thing with, when you're doing timber harvesting, you have a timber, you have a road to get your equipment.
That was my point.
Yeah, and, and that's associated, so it's an associated and a pertinent use to, to that type of use.
Okay, totally unrelated question. I, I see that boarding house is being needed under six point two, six point one, point two, three, um, but bed and breakfast is still here. Um, I, I, I don't expect the board to, to do anything about this, but I know in Portland, South Portland and other areas, there have been a lot of, uh, controversy about Airbnb and on the way, the RBO or whatever it is, the, the short-term rentals using the internet. Uh, and I, I'm, I'm just, not a, not a red flag, but raising a flag that has something that, that might come up and I'm not clear if, if, if that's not included as a conditional use, a short-term rental of residence, does that mean that it's prohibited under the building rule?
Yeah, a boarding house as it's defined would be prohibited, boarding house being that you rent out rooms, uh, and then provide meals. That's basically how it's defined in our ordinance. We were going for bed and breakfasts, which were a little different. Um, there was not a permanent residence kind of facility, bed and breakfast is a lodging facility, boarding house is a permanent residence facility.
I, I understand, but if, if I have a, an apartment over my garage, which complies with all the requirements for accessory dwelling and, and all of that, am I allowed to rent that out using one of the internet services?
We do not currently have, nor is the plan to discuss the issue of short-term rentals. Just like we don't regulate whether you rent out the house that you own because you're going to Canada for a year, um, you don't do it on a short-term basis either.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have your hand raised, Dan, so?
I know.
Okay.
Any other comment in the back?
Uh, land management roads, so, please state your name.
Yeah.
Josh West. Um, so if you have a old tow road that accesses the back of your property that you're cutting part of wood or doing something like that, is that no longer allowed?
No, that's, that's, that, no, that's an associated use to what you're doing. Action, okay?
Okay.
And again, those uses were uses that were mandated by the state shoreline zoning ordinance for use in a shoreline zone when they heavily regulate how you do that in one of the shoreline zones, be it stream protection, resource protection, or even shoreline overlay. And so, um, as I said, when we had, when we first did this, the, the two thousand ten version, at that time we had a matrix, which listed land uses and then enlisted across in the matrix, the zones and whether it was permitted or not permitted. And because the state required us to list those and we did not separate it out, the town at that time did not separate it out and list the land uses, we had to have that matrix. When we switched over, one of the conditions of doing the switch over is that we weren't changing, you know, from the way it was. We reformat it, we're not gonna make any substantive changes. So we didn't. You'll find that in all of the residential district experiences. As we do each residential district, you'll see things like ma- land management, but it's fallen off.
So would it be helpful to say, "Please refer to..."
Well, it'll come up when you, when you go in your shoreline zone, you wanna do some, okay? It's just a question of how much you want us to regulate.
Well, as many arrows as we can send people to go look at things without having to come to you to ask the question is probably positive. Well, as many arrows as we can send people to go look at things without having to come to you to ask the question is probably positive. So if it's easy just to say to please refer to the following sections, and perhaps people can answer their own questions.
Any additional comment on item three? Here none will close this public hearing at seven fifty-three and open the public hearing to item four, amendments to land use ordinance nine point two, definition of home occupations and repeal and replacement of nine point three point twenty-four, home occupations to identify type one and type two home occupation activities. Now you can start on Ted.
Home occupations was of great concern to the boards, especially to the conference room, where they wanted to make distinctions between various kinds of home occupations based on intensity of use. For somebody who is not going to be doing, who is making, a home occupation is essentially a business you're doing in the home. And based on what the intensity of that business is, is the threshold for a home occupation, for instance, and whether it should be regulated. Those home occupations, which are basically a hobby or something somebody does individually that doesn't take up that much room in the roof in the house, doesn't involve a lot of materials that would require storage outside, something that would change the residential character of the house, that is, let's say, a traditional thing to do, like quilt making or jam or something of that nature. The intent was to essentially make it so that particular activity was permitted in residential districts and would not require any kind of town oversight as long as anybody who's doing that business is in compliance with the tenants of type one operation. And they're very specified in the conditional uses or the performance standards there. So essentially, the type one is a low-impact, single-user kind of impact, which should rarely be known. That doesn't mean you can have visitors, you can have people come, but it's really meant to be a very innocuous kind of activity. You probably wouldn't know what's going on. That should not be permitted and won't be permitted unless somebody complains that they're out of compliance. That's about the only way that the town will ever know about it or do anything about that. Type two is an activity where we start getting a little bit more, where we have employees, we have people coming, coming to pick up their goods or participate. We're talking about, here we try to get some measurable gauges for impact, one of which is always in the home occupations, traffic, be limited to twenty trips for the business, not the household, but for the business specifically, and number of employees. We have employees with a second type two. One would think in the future we will have a type three, or maybe not. That's something the boards will have to go over as we get into other districts where there might be more intense types of home occupations, where there are more employees, where there's actually materials stored. And you think about some of these activities might be somebody who's a furniture builder and he has a lot of materials or things of that nature. But right now, we're keeping it very limited to type one and type two. And the second one would require a permit, that would come from the staff review committee.
Any comment on this proposed change? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing at seven fifty-seven and open the public hearing to item five, amendments to land use ordinance nine point three point fourteen point two to extend deadline for registration of existing contractor yards and addition of contractor yards to the list of permitted and conditional uses in the residential and rural districts.
This is a two-pronged one. One is that the planning board has received a lot of comments from people who run existing contractor yards. And they felt that they, because they were, started out as basically a home occupation or they grew outside of the home occupation. Some of them never, we never even knew they existed or they didn't know they were operating. And the planning board had given a chance back in 2016, without such a list, we did the best we could from talking to people, who was a contractor yard that might want to participate in this program of getting registered. And so we sent out notices, but apparently we missed a lot of people. And the word did not get out as much as we had hoped it had gotten out. So at the request of a number of contractors out in the landscape, we, the planning board considered and heard these comments and decided to give it one more shot since everybody was aware now that they could get registered, that those that were there and could meet those performance standards you'll see in the, in section nine three fourteen, that they have another chance to register with the planning board. We come permitted uses in that particular location wherever they are. They have to demonstrate that they had a right to be there in the first place, they were legal, and that they meet all of those performance standards in order to meet that registration. So it would be, assuming, let's say, it is in fact passed in June, it would give such operators an opportunity within fourteen months to get a permit from the planning board. Or not, depending whether or not they meet the standards. But we opened it for those who felt they had been, didn't have a chance to do that registration. The second part of it is something that came up during our review of, actually several contractor yards applications that the section that we have in nine three fourteen specifies where you're going to have certain contractor yards. But that, because that was before we did our new format, that did not translate over into the list of uses in the residential districts. Because contractor yards basically deal with the residential districts and the rural district. They're permitted in all the business districts and all the commercial districts. So it basically deals with that. And they're specified in nine three fourteen. The intent of this is to take those specifically specified areas that currently exist and put them in this list of land uses in the R1, two, three, and R4, so there's no confusion. So it's kind of a housekeeping detail. There was also, I should also mention that the planning board also wanted to change some of the buffering standard in all of them for the parking lots to ensure that it was more flexible, that you could use different things. It only specified certain types of methodologies for buffering. In fact, it required that you couldn't see anything. And there's some circumstances where screening, the planning board felt screening was going to be as effective as blocking. In some cases you can't block, but you can screen, so and buffer. Buffer is, the difference between buffering and screening is identified in the landscape and in the definitions as being a percentage of visual penetration, so. And it's set by the planning board for each individual circumstance.
In front.
Kevin, so I was confused because I was just looking at the 2018 land use ordinance. And in all but the R2 district, the contractor storage yard one was already listed for all of these, so I'm confused why we're adding, unless the most recent one that's built on mine is not correct. Contractor, I mean, in the downtown business district, it's listed as use sixteen. Business industrial is listed as use six, six, it's already listed again in outer rural business district. So I don't, I'm unclear.
As I said, this, it really pertains to the residential districts and is listed in the.
I think I can help him because I have the same question. As I am single-handedly committed to keeping the paper straight and clean, stay together.
Thank you.
I can't do anything without a bullet paper, so I have to print everything and I have to put all these examples together because that's how I keep track, but I know exactly what he's trying to say, so. It's all right, because I'd waste your house, what he's talking about, because I saw the same thing. So, thanks, I'll be your new friend. I actually put together a chart on page four of what I just handed out. And so the revision that you all have published indicates, you know, add contractor yard as permitted use, downtown business, add contractor yard, you know, six, six, one, add contractor, add, add. And with the exception of R3, they're already in there. So I think that's really confusing.
And my other question would be why, what's, I mean, the only thing I can tell the difference between R2 and R3 is arbitrary lines on a map. And in R3, you cannot have, in R2, you can't have a golf course and maybe mineral extraction. So I'm unclear why it wouldn't be added to the R3 zone as well. In the previous decisions of the land use ordinance, in the R4 zone, for contractors, storage yard one and two were either permitted or conditional uses, and now they're not listed in the R4 zone at all. Which in the statute, when you add the contractor storage yard, the contractor storage yard two would need to be over five acres, because that really forced it into the R4 zone anyways.
That was for existing, that was not for proposed.
But it's not clear why you were proposing to make what you were outlining as being a change to all of these other districts, and it's already listed. I don't think people can understand the logic of that.
The only one piece that's actually changed would be adding it to R1. And it's, I mean, to R3.
R3.
And I don't, it seems as though adding it to R2, if we're going to add it to R3, would be sensible. All the area requirements.
And then you get into nine point three one four C, where it's the performance standard for existing contractor yards. And it indicates there that there are lists that are located in R1, R2, R3, and R4, but your change is not inflecting any of those being added.
While Ted is looking into that, are there any other, Lynn?
I have a little half forty-nine that we wrote, a very specific question and a very good answer. So the specific question is, if somebody has already gone but didn't register back in, I think that by 2016, went through the permitting process and was denied by the planning board, if this extension is voted upon and granted, does that open that up for that particular applicant who was denied, who was not in compliance to be able to automatically register and go through this process easier?
You didn't hear the nuance of that problem?
I heard them.
So I know exactly what.
What you would have to show is that you can be in compliance with the current regulation as it's specified there. And right now, that individual has already gone through this process. The planning board's already stated its opinion that they're not very compliant and we're court-martialed. So I would say that that would not be an opportunity to connect with them.
My general question is, by extending the deadline to register, what doesn't the existing operation have to go through that they wouldn't if it didn't get extended? And what opportunities are lost? Is there a sidewalk? Is there an opportunity for the public to speak out?
Oh, yeah. The registration process is well specifying, it goes through the same process as doing an application. The assumption is that if somebody's been operating legally or has been operating for quite a while, what's happened is that zones here in the town have, over the last thirty years, changed. And somebody was allowed to do something at one point in the zoning was HC1 or something like that. Now, now it's R2, or it's R2s, I think the R's all changed back in 2005. And suddenly, these individuals were non-performing, they were non-performing uses. A good example the board just dealt with was Houston Company, which was permitted as a business operation and essentially amounts to an industrial operation in that zone. And then it was changed to residential, and now he's suddenly non-performing. Now, for some folks, non-performing means that you can't expand, or you only can expand a certain amount. So if you have a business and you went in with the understanding that you could operate here and now suddenly you've changed the zoning and you've made your investments into your property and into your infrastructure and you can't, and now you can't expand, that's obviously a hardship. So the objective here is if you can show that you, first of all, were legally there in the first place, and then they changed the zoning on to make you non-performing, that we can make you a conforming use in that you are permitted to be there. A non-conforming use can be a real, a real problem for a business sometimes, especially when it comes to financing, especially if you get short-term loans. There are many, there are many banks that just won't give you if you're not performing loans. We've seen situations where a non-conforming business in even a business zone hasn't been able to get financed. So the objective there is to allow these businesses to continue if they can do all those things. And if they can't, then we have a problem.
So is there, are there any steps that they bypass by this registration period that if you didn't extend it, that an applicant would have to go through?
Well, the thing, the only difference would be that they wouldn't have to do a site plan showing us what they propose to do. They would show us a plan of what they have.
Where is that specified then?
It's specified in section two, where it goes through the registration process. And then, if you look at section nine three fourteen and three, that's dealing with contract, excuse me, I'm sorry, performance, in the reading on page one fifty-three or section nine three fourteen two C for the contractor yards one and four. D for those that have contractor yards two. So that's for existing. That's why it says existing contractor yards.
So why, how does this change in opening the registration process backup? All of the changes that you put forward, that, again, I guess it seems to already be in there, none of them speak to contractor yards two, but that exemption of existing operations, does any of this deal with contractor yards two? So I guess we can shortcut.
Does any of this?
Yeah. So why isn't it mentioned?
Well, it is, it says any operation existing as a.
But the change, but you're not, the changes that you're adding are contractor yard ones that are already there and some of them don't have contractor yard twos there either. I don't know, I guess the whole thing feels like it's circularized.
Well, I don't, I don't think it really is. I think that this particular section was meant as a form of amnesty for people who missed the registration process. There are a lot of business owners, many of them who didn't see the process or the registration period posted and missed the window and consequently was precluded from applying after missing that opportunity. And so they're sort of out in the cold. They want to get their permits, they want to be recognized by the town, but the town didn't, wouldn't open the door. And so the way we can open that door back up for people to come and seek, you know, permits, my understanding is that they go through the permit process just like anybody else, but we would give them an opportunity to actually do that. As opposed to being a new business that would come into town and look for a permit. These are existing businesses that missed that window, can't get in, and this would be the way that they could apply.
So who's going to enforce, how's that going to regulate? Because if, if there are businesses, and I'm sure, you know, we all could look around the town and wonder whether they've done their, their due diligence or not, whose job is it going to be to say, hey, X, Y, Z company, you didn't come forward to the town on the registration?
Well, no, but I think for the reasons that Ted just explained, a lot of businesses can't function fully without being in compliance.
No, but if we open, if we, I understand that. So if we open the door for them to do it, but they still choose not to do it, what happens then?
Oh, well, you know, we've talked about that too, because the town only has so much manpower to police everybody. But the thing is, we had two young business owners come that missed that window of opportunity, want to get permits and can't get back, can't.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, we want to at least address that so that they have an opportunity, you know, to come into the fold, so to speak, be legitimized by the town and fully function. And that doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to get the permit. They'd have to go through the whole process just like anybody else would. It just means that we would give them the opportunity to fill out the permit.
So is the permit that they would be asked to get, would it be what we all went through as for a contractor yard or contractor yard two, or would it be a conditional use form? Or would that depend on the nature of the business?
I think it depends on the nature of the business, but Ted would have to speak to that specifically.
We've done this, we've twice in three. Last time we had three. That's all.
Yeah.
So.
Were they all two?
Uh, two, yeah.
Contractor two yards?
Yeah, Mark Welch was one of them.
Yeah, and Linda Zook was the other two.
Linda Zook was the other two. And we had a third, but on John Poff road, but he chose to pull out. And just going with his non-conform status. Okay.
And who, who was the young business owner that missed the, he was so distressed that he couldn't refile and get his permit? I'm trying to remember.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I'll have to go back.
Have to go back to the back.
Yes, but he came to a trouble meeting.
Yes.
Oh, wherever you are.
Is there anything preventing, so if someone missed the deadline, which the lengthy process we went through, that was a situation, he did not register. And he applied for a permit. So I guess I'm confused as to what the registration process does differently. If they have to go through the same permitting process that you have to do if we don't extend it, what's preventing them from getting a permit? They just have to file an application, right? And provide all the due diligence to the planning board and present? What am I, I guess I'm confused. I don't know what I'm missing.
Basically, if you look at it, it says some of the same standards that were in the same thing that Mr. Stoltenberg threw, are in here.
All right.
All right, in, let's say, performance standards for existing contractor yards, performance standards for, for existing contractor yards two, they interlock, and they're some of the same standards. You still have to go through the conditional use standard and meet all those ten criteria.
Regardless, if the registration period is extended and someone registers, they still have to go through all of that. So I, I guess, there must be something I'm missing.
Well, you can't, if, if you don't have the registration process there, and, and you're not allowed to have a two in the R one district, for instance, okay? Which right now, you wouldn't.
But you're also not proposing.
This is, no, we're not proposing that, but the point is, to give an example, Mark Welch is clearly a two. Okay, he's one of the best examples I can come up with. You have somebody who's been doing an operation for so long, and it was doing a very large operation, and could not, could not under any, in fact, he had to go under the guise of a earth extraction operation or a mineral extraction operation. He had to remove his permit in three years. Clearly established, clearly there, not doing any mineral extraction because there's no minerals to extract. And so he was a well-established contractor yard in a district where he could never, ever be a contractor yard without this, this system. Because what it does is he basically recognizes those who have been here and are operating for a long period of time versus those who want to come in and do that kind of operation.
So in our situation, if Mr. Stoltenberg registered, he could have gotten his permit without this whole process. If it's, maybe I should ask the question again. If it's not allowed in a, in a zone, this process allows them to keep their existing operation, even though it's not permitted by the zoning?
Correct. A new one can be permitted.
Okay, so, okay. Can we sort of tangentially connect it to that? So my page three in my hand-me-down document is the definitions of contractor yard one and two. And so when you are evaluating these folks that are perhaps, you know, registering or re- or for lack of a better term, are they still subject to these definitions?
I would say they're subject to the definitions.
Sorry, it's two-sided printing, I'm sort of seeing it through.
They would be allowed as it currently is if they're an existing operation. Are you talking about existing operations?
If they're going to be an existing, if they're existing operations and they're trying to go through this registration process, and you all have to try and decide, are you going to be a one or a two?
Right.
This is the definition they would have to abide by?
They would have to go by C or D, because you'll notice that C talks about, it limits the types of vehicles, numbers of vehicles, encoded vehicles, so that's what we.
Well, yeah, contractor yard one says something about a code twenty-five, code thirty, and what.
These are vehicles, these are actual MDT.
So that would be how you would swat them?
Differentiate.
Yeah, you would differentiate that.
So.
When you go to twos, there's no, there's no limitation.
So my other question on this is contractor yard one. And obviously, last year when we were here, we were so focused on contractor yard two that I didn't pay attention to one. Last sentence, asphalt paving businesses are excluded from contractor yard one. Does excluded mean they cannot be classified as a contractor yard one? Or does it mean they are exempt and they don't need the contractor one would never apply?
A contractor yard one would not.
So they automatically by fault?
They have to be a two.
They have to be a two.
This business?
It's code twenty-five, code thirty vehicles. Asphalt paving one, okay, okay.
Well, Dewey, Chip had his end up.
No, okay, go ahead, Chip.
I don't need to beat that horse, but I, I have the same question that they had, and I just don't feel like I have an answer. If, if, if a business has been operating prior to the town adopting restrictions on contractor yards, they can continue operating that business regardless of what zone they're in, and they, but they cannot extend. Is that correct?
They, they wouldn't necessarily be recognized by an outside entity as having a legitimate.
I, I, I do understand that part. But it's, if I'm, I, I have, what I'm doing puts me in the, in the contractor yard two category. If this change is not, if, if the sunset set date is not extended, I have to go through, if I want to expand, or if I simply want to get a permit for my business so that I can go to the bank and get financing for new vehicles, I have to go through the conditional use application process, just, just as the gentleman from the center had to go through. I, I don't understand why the sunset's being extended for a couple of things. I, I will point out that the board had a time window open to do this. Bothered to extend that window by more than a year, if I remember correctly. And then, at, at least once between July one of two thousand sixteen and June thirty of two thousand eighteen, I think twice, the board considered it opening to a new intent and decided not to. So I, I guess I have a couple of questions. What, what has changed from, I know there was one, I believe there was one in December of two thousand sixteen, what has changed since then to, to, to make this an imperative to bring the town meeting? But I, I just want to reiterate this question. I, I don't understand what the difference in the process is between registering with the, the, I don't know what you would call it, the, the existing business exemption versus getting a conditional use permit.
I'm not sure if there's a huge difference in the process, but if, if you didn't extend it and somebody wished to register that was in a zone in which it wasn't allowed, had an existing, essentially an existing contractor yard that was there, then they wouldn't have any opportunity to do that.
No, you've been under a dis.
Yeah. Right.
Thank you. Actually, Ted, I have a question or response to your opening statement, which I found was very interesting. I think you, if I recall correctly, you said the impetus for, for a lot of this change had to do with, and correct me if I'm wrong, home occupations that were actually contractor yards. Can you tell me how many home occupations that were contractor yards that were part of that decision-making process?
It starts with, there was, well, currently, right now, a contractor yard, a home occupation can be a contractor.
But, I'm sorry, sir, but you said explicitly in your thesis statement that the motivation for this was primarily due to home occupations, existing home occupations that were operating as contractor yards.
Right.
So when I hear that, I have to assume that there were multiple home occupations that were operating as contractor yards. Again, I'm only saying this because in your opening statement, you say that specifically home occupations that were acting as this was the, was the driving force for doing this. So I guess what I'm asking you is how many, how many existed such that it would drive this, it would drive this change in legislation?
Well, it's, it's actually, it's a question of, there, there literally would be scores. There would be scores. The reason why is people start off with landscaping businesses. They have a couple of dollars, not a problem.
Okay. May I follow up after you're done?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. What happens is that the intent of home occupations, I believe, and I only can surmise this from what I've been able to tell, because this occurred before I got here, for instance. Home occupations were considered, if you have a small contracting business, that, that wasn't even a home occupation. You can do it by right. Right now, you can do it by right. If you have, if you follow certain rules, one of which is your employees don't meet you there, you don't store materials on the site, and you're limited to two, basically two axle vehicles, you're not, you're not even considered a home occupation. You can do it by right in, in town. And then, some people did home occupations where they exceeded that. And that was considered to be a home occupation by our predecessors. And what, and the idea was, they can do this in a small scale, and eventually will grow to the point where then they have to go to the business zones and open a larger, a larger operation. Makes sense. But what happens is, many of these folks didn't move. When they got larger, they got bigger and bigger and bigger, more and more equipment, more and more storage of materials, and never went to a business zone. So the concept failed. It was a failed concept, didn't work, because there was no follow.
There's nobody enforcing.
There was no follow. No, there was no force.
I'll ask the question again. You said clearly that the driving force for this was due to home occupations that were operating as contractor yards. That's your words, not mine. So if that's the driving force, I simply asked you, how many home occupations are currently acting as contractor yards? My worry is, and I'm going to say it, obviously, you know that our situation was a result of a home occupation that then was a resulted in trying to apply for a contractor yard. I'm only responding to what you said. It was your thesis statement, and you said this was primarily due to home occupations that were acting as contractor yards, which is the reason for changing the ordinance. So I'll ask you again, how many situations in town are there where we have home occupations acting as contractor yards?
I don't think I can answer that question, because it's a historical question. I'm telling you, basically, some started off as home occupations, and they prove to be contractor yards.
But how many?
I don't know.
Your woman in the door.
There's no inventory. This happened.
But why make your statement saying the whole point of this was because of that?
The whole point of this was to take non-conforming uses that have become non-conforming uses and make them conforming. Because the option, the only option is to put them out of business, right? So we're going to have businesses that have been here before areas even became residential districts, and we're going to put them out of business?
No, you specifically said home occupations.
That's one.
I'm going, no, I'm sorry, but I have to say this.
What is the point? What's the point you're trying to get across here?
The point is, you're saying there must be more than one situation of a home occupation where these individuals are acting as contractor yards. Your words, you said this was the driving force for it.
Are we, are we?
It can be any guy on a pickup truck.
It's the driving of the pickup. It starts off, right now, they still are not regulated. They aren't even considered home occupations. They're exempt from home occupation status.
Oh, so these are people who don't have a home occupation already?
No, they're, they're people who are allowed, they, they had a home occupation, they did it out of their home.
And they're falling under the radar with no permit of any.
They didn't have to have them.
So they, I knew it would purge them to come in and register and, and be known to the town.
So we know.
So you can get an inventory.
Right. Yeah, so we can get an inventory because we don't have an inventory.
But if they still choose not to do that, there's no plan in place to?
Well, unless the state want to allocate resources for us to go and, and.
Start to enforce that.
Or hard to enforce it.
Or unless there's a complaint.
Right, that's usually a complaint.
That's usually how it happens. It's like you have a complaint from somebody, and then we go in and, and investigate it. But, I mean, we, we don't really go around and, and, we don't have the resources, we don't have the resources to do that. And we don't want to, we don't, in the standpoint of.
So I guess I wonder why then, why are we even opening up the registration again? It seems like it doesn't matter.
Because, yeah, it seemed clear to us with only three registering, somehow the word hadn't gotten out adequately. So we'll try it again.
In fact, one of, one of the parts of the discussion was, how do we get the word out better than happened last time? Should we send it with tax bills? Is that going to reach everybody? No, not necessarily to those who might be renters who are falling into this category. So we, we, we did kick that around to try to figure out how we could best energize this process and publicize that process.
You go with Dan.
I, I guess my question is, what's the issue? I mean, I think that the town is trying to get an inventory. What does it hurt? If somebody is not going to register, at some point in time, they're probably going to get caught. I think it's just, it's an olive branch to go out to the business and say, hey, we've got this, you know, here's an opportunity. What's, what's the issue with it? What's wrong with, with extending that thing?
And that, I think, to Chip's question, what, what's the difference? Maybe it is just the different makeup of the board and a different mentality that, that had a little more of a, I hate to use the term lenient, but a little more of an open approach to, to contractor yards and, and at least wanting to get people to get those registered if they, if they felt the need.
I don't think that's a fair characterization of the boards or the way you're sitting.
I mean, obviously, I don't remember all the discussions, Chip, from previous boards. I mean, I, I, obviously, I don't remember all the discussions, Chip, from previous boards.
I have one, one other comment. Very, very minute question. If, if a change were to be made to the disproposal dealing with contractor yards, there, in section nine point three point four, nine point three point one four four B six, at the top of page one fifty six. There is a requirement for a fuel containment system surrounding any above-ground fuel storage tanks. While I was on the board via preliminary application from Trotty A. Paving, they had a storage tank which I believe was under five hundred gallons and understate in federal's regulations. There's a requirement for a containment system under five hundred gallons. And I'm just throwing out that, that if the board is cleaning up contractor yard language, putting, making any above-ground fuel storage tanks at five hundred gallons or more would be a good idea. But if you are, if, if, if the current proposal was being read in the public hearing today, is, does not get changed, then that, I, I'm not suggesting that, that it be changed solely for that. I'm simply saying, if it were to be amended for some other reason, I'm suggesting this be added as well.
Are you saying to, to limit that, Chip, to anything greater than five hundred gallons?
The fuel containment system, yes.
So anything smaller than that? Do you prefer not to have any, any kind of containment?
My understanding was that, maybe I'm, maybe I'm recalling wrong. Don't worry about it.
Are you sure?
Huh?
Are you sure?
Uh, well, my.
No, because I'm trying, I'm legitimately trying to understand, I mean.
My, my understanding from when we did the sitewalk for Trotty A. Paving, the first sitewalk, I don't know if there was a subsequent one. But the first sitewalk, somebody pointed out a, an above-ground fuel storage tank which did not have a containment system. And the applicant said, it's less than five hundred gallons and not required to have a containment system. And so a little bit, we pointed to this language here, which means if you have a five-gallon fuel container, you get, you get a five, five-gallon above-ground fuel storage tank, that you would have to have a containment system. I'm, I'm sorry, this, maybe this isn't relevant to the public hearing, I apologize.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we keep that in mind if we get through to that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Carroll Court, Law, Cabin Road. If you told a company that they can't have their equipment on their property because they don't comply or they didn't fill out your forms, if they filled out forms, would do let them back on, on the property, bring their equipment back?
I mean, ultimately, I don't know if the, the town is gonna be, I mean, are we looking to take a position that you're gonna remove people from, if they don't, don't do this? I don't think that's, that was the planning board's intent.
It's the need to require it.
You have to, yeah, you have to meet the requirement. If you don't meet the requirement, then, yeah, you're subject to enforcement. And that's, and so.
So you're saying that they, you would not allow them back?
Well, what you would wanna do is first register. I mean, if you didn't register, you know, and, and, and were illegal, you were illegally there, you never had a legal right to do that, then yeah, you're in violation of the zoning laws. If you did, if you were allowed at that time, then you have a right to, to register. You don't have to meet the standards, the current standards, but they're specified.
Okay, I guess that's an answer.
Well, we have people who have basically done, and who have started a contractor yard with equipment and so forth in a place where they're not permitted to do it. They weren't permitted to do it then, when they started, so.
How many have you sent out? How many in a rundle have you said you can't keep your equipment here any longer? How many businesses?
Uh, there's one that I'm aware of, possibly another, but there's one where basically it's been enforcement action since two thousand on that. Equipment keeps coming back where it's not supposed to be, and it was informed back in two thousand about that. I'm not gonna specify who it is.
No, I'm not asking you to, I'm just wondering where, uh, people who have been here for years and years and years, probably born and raised here and do business and their place is clean and, and no one in the neighborhood complains about them and everything. Maybe somebody else out of the neighborhood. I don't understand why you'd stop people from making a living. Why, why can't it be considered grandfathered?
Well, that's what this does. I mean, this is, this makes you grandfather. It makes you also so that you're not a non-conforming user, you don't carry that red badge and the scarlet letter that you're non-conforming, which really can have an impact upon your business plan. If you wanna expand, you can't.
And, and the benefit is if you, if you do register, then you, you do have that, that sort of legitimate business license to operate and you're not subject to, you know, a complaint by, you know, somebody in the neighborhood or, or something like that jeopardizing your ability to have your business there. Is that, that, a fair characterization?
If you're operating in such a way that's in nuisance.
Right. Well, I mean, I mean, but if you're not, assuming you're not doing that.
Just your existence.
You're just, yeah, your, your existence in itself, right. If you were registered, would allow you to keep going.
So there still is an opening for a, a person to come and fill out paperwork?
If this moves forward.
If this goes through, if this moves forward.
Yeah. If that's passed, then you'll have that opportunity again. If not, then that, that registration period is closed. And, you know, you'd be subject to any other potential enforcement, just like any other non-conforming business in town.
Is there a letter going out to businesses?
That was.
That is the intent, and the thing is, since we don't have a list, and, you know, we asked around the last time and got a list of folks, but it was very incomplete, we found out. So we would probably do a broad spectrum notification and send it out with all the tax bills. We miss those who are renting, whatever.
So that process stills, you're talking about?
Well, only if this passes.
Right.
Only if this extension passes. If it, because right now, this extension, in fact, we were gonna take it out because it was no longer relevant. This, this sunsetted back on August first, two thousand sixteen. It's totally useless being in the ordinance anymore. We were gonna take it out, but the, we got, the board got enough requests to keep it in and do it again. And I'll open it up one more time because there's been a lot more communication, a lot more rumblings through the, through the, you know, through the back channels that this opportunity existed and people wanted, wanted an opportunity to register their, their operations.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, look, look, Dan?
Quick question. On the handouts that you, that went out, you also talk about, and then nine point three, one, four, one, C, one. That, that, that's not part of this public hearing tonight, is it?
Nine three four.
Yes. Yes.
But that's not, that's not what's advertised, right? Those, those sections aren't what's advertised.
Yeah, so they're all bundled together.
Right.
It's bundled as one. And it was even less in the, in the newspaper ad because I couldn't put them all in there. It would cost thousands of dollars to put all that stuff in the newspaper ad. It was bad enough.
When?
Um, so I have a couple of quick things. Just wanted to make sure I've been heard it by, and if the registration deadline is extended and someone goes through the registration process, they are subject to the same performance standards that is just a contractor, it's a contractor yard to.
You're talking about the noise standards, those?
I'm talking about all of them.
Yeah, noise, stormwater, all that stuff is, is.
All the same performance standards outlined in the land use ordinance is, if, if they go through the registration process, they still have to conform with all of those standards. And the planning board will be determining whether or not they conform. So one of the things I didn't see, but I might have missed it, is as part of the application process, there's the sitewalk. I didn't see that and miss. Is there any consideration to that, to go out through the registration process and do a sitewalk?
No, we did sitewalks, there were previous ones.
Yeah.
So that's part of the process?
So, to your, I highly doubt we're gonna be flooded with applications, but where you just, you, you, you've sort of created this, this is what we want, this is what needs to happen. If you were to be flooded, because I think I already said there are scores of these businesses, this would be all you guys did.
Yeah.
Be the only thing you do is register these businesses.
Oh, no, we'd have to do all the rest.
You would have to expand the board to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, you would be, you would potentially, and like I said, I doubt these people gotta come like beating down the doors, but, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Complicated.
It is complicated, it would be, it would be tough on the sport.
I have one more, pardon my question.
Okay.
And it pertains to, to this discussion around the containment stores taking containment system. Being somebody that's close to a contractor yard to, I guess I don't know, was five hundred gallons the right number? And we're all on well, so to me, I'd actually rather leave it the way it is, but I understand that there may be some quantity that doesn't require one. I just don't know what that number is.
Right.
So I'd ask the planning board to be thoughtful and do diligence around that if you're gonna actually put in a number that's going to exclude containment systems for several states.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I think I can, okay. Generally speaking, when you have a containment yard, you would be like every homeowner who has an outside fuel tank for your heating up or anything else.
Those are what, two hundred and fifty gallons?
Two hundred and seventy-five and three hundred and thirty, okay, roughly. Somewhere along the line in the state, they came up with a figure of anything over five hundred gallons had to have a containment system.
But that's a state guideline.
I think that was the state guidelines. I may be wrong, but I remember years ago when Dickie McCade had a larger tank outside and he was doing something, the state came through or did whatever, I'll stop because he was using it like to fuel his own trucks up and everything else because you aren't gonna find a gas station in the middle of the night when you were hauling salt or anything else. And that was one of those things, is I think he had a, a tank that was five hundred gallons or larger so that he could continuously to roll his equipment and everything else. And that's why he had to put a, a tank in there. That's where I'm coming at from that factor.
And if it's a state guideline, I guess that gives some little context, but I think.
Yeah, and then, that ultimately would.
I don't have any true figures to say it, but I mean, but I, you know, seen how it worked.
Yeah, if we get to a point where we assess those performance standards at some point, we'll definitely keep that in mind.
I, I just wanna, main DEP actually for household owners, if they have a tank on the outside, they actually work with the households who actually put in a containment system.
Right.
Maybe that's new, but years ago.
So let's move along to the containment system, since that's really not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Diane, do you have?
I've been waiting for fifteen minutes to say, make a point about it. When you're talking about a tank on somebody's house.
Okay, so, hold on.
We're talking about containers.
Yeah.
They brought it up. I wanna say something about it. When you, when you talk about someone having a tank, an oil tank on their house, that's usually for their use, they're not driving around it, they're not gassing up out of it. We're talking about a town that all lives on well. And if you do have a leak, we have an issue. I'm not inclined, since a lot of people haven't requested that this be changed, I'm not inclined to remove it because I think it's a good safety feature. I think waiting till somebody has five hundred gallons to put a ta, to put a containment on it is, is probably not prudent for us to do.
So, so there's, there's no part of this proposal that had any, any mention of changing anything to that containment?
No, and I'm just saying that, at this point, I don't think we need to.
That was, that was something that Chip had, right. Chip had observed in his review of the ordinance, and that wasn't in any way proposed by this board as, as changes to the land use ordinance. So if, what else, I'll just say, if in fact we do revisit those standards at some point, we will keep everybody's comments in mind, okay?
So in this, this change to the zones, which may or may not be adding six different places to next contractor yard, one was my, one was one, I would just ask that we contemplate adding it to the R two district as well as the R two and R three have the same performance standards, as I said, except for a golf course or mineral extraction. I wonder why the two zones are different in the first place? And again, they seem.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
I'm, I'm just asking, and Todd, you might be able to answer this better, but I believe that in one of the former comprehensive, I mean, land use ordinances that both the contractor storage yard one and two are permitted uses in the R four zone, and neither one seems to be now.
We haven't done four?
Conditioners.
Are they conditional uses now?
No.
I don't, well, I just looked on my phone, so I didn't have a big printout like you guys do, but it seemed as though they were gone from there.
I mean, that would be the, the question that I started with is, where did published change indicate that this would be a change to several different districts? And you referred to the six point one, point one, and they're already there. I think that that's very confusing for people.
And I don't.
And I had some questions around that in mind, look, so we'll be discussing that in a little bit.
I just, I guess, what prompted me to make this, we do those papers, I got all the puddles.
All right.
My other question is, where is a contractor yard, or a card contractor yard two applicable at this point? Anyways, like, if a Mark Welch wanted to come to town, where could he even do that?
Uh, Business District.
Yeah. Which did Business District?
AR.
Which one?
AR. One.
How am I speaking English?
On the rundle, I, excuse me, the other road. See, the, the thing is, the, the district, section nine, three, fourteen says where they can go.
Yeah.
Okay? And what we're trying to do is make sure that coordinated with our districts. That's all we wanted.
It just seems as though like the Route one quarter.
Route one quarters.
But not the downtown Business District one is not allowed.
Well, it's a very small district, it's only three feet wide, so.
And that was focused on, hopefully, at some point, a different style of business.
No, it is in D B two, but that.
Right, that's the back, that's the backwater.
And it's mitigated a lot by the proximity to all those residential neighborhoods and, and or setbacks off of that, so it's just very difficult. It's like the, all the business like that.
There's a lot of land that, you have two districts. At least on the east side, there's a lot.
A lot of borders are R district, maybe.
All right. Any additional comments on item five with the contractor yards? Chip?
Yeah, in section nine point three point one four two, registration of existing contractor yards, it gives you the application submission.
Yeah.
And, and item, item four is mitigation measures currently employed to minimize oversub and other off-site nuisances. But that's, that is, what, what they are current, they, they are simply required to, to state what they are doing. They're not required to prove that what they're doing is adequate in terms of environmental concerns. And I'm, what, what comes to mind candidly is a, uh, an application, it's, 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 uh, well, a, a, a situation where there is an existing contractor yard which may in fact pose some kind of environmental concern for neighboring properties. And, and I'm not sure if this, this application submission addresses that or gives the board the, that requires the board or even gives the board the authority to take concerns like that into account when reviewing an application to register an existing, the existing business as a contractor yard.
So Chip, I would, I would disagree, and I would say that because if you continue on, that's the application criteria. If you continue on into section D, number five, all materials likely to produce odors, dust, debris shall be contained either within enclosed or in a manner that these nuisances shall not adversely impact adjacent properties. So that's the, they right there are the threshold that the planning board would be looking at to assess the project, the yard or not the existing yard, not the, just the application submission.
Okay.
Jamie, since you have that section right open, um, like you're saying, Tad just mentioned that nine point three point one four specifies where, where contractor yard one and two can go. I just want to make sure I see that, okay.
No, that, that doesn't, that doesn't play, that, that's the process for...
Yeah, but I thought, I thought I just heard Tad saying that this section spells out where they are and are not allowed, and it doesn't seem to do that.
It doesn't, it doesn't do that. If, if you have...
I can't hear them.
They're all right there.
Have operating something that currently, operating since 1985, you and your family have operated...
They're all spelled out in the introductory paragraph of, for the performance standards of the existing or proposed yards, where they all are, where they're all are, are allowed.
So proposed, that still is in conflict with the proposed changes that are being...
Guys, I can't hear.
And that's what we're going to clean up.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I do have one other question. Chip, don't answer this, but I'm... In some of the zones, contractor yards are permitted use. In other zones, it is a conditional use. Could someone explain why that's different?
But does this have anything to do with what we're trying to change?
Yes, it does.
I think, I think this because of the changes in the, because of the context of the changes of where they're allowed, does in a, in a bit. So ultimately, that's not going to be changed, but it's a, you can see that as a question. Do you want, I mean, do you want to elaborate on what's, what's types or get the propos- get the permitted versus a conditional?
Um, it was, it was based, let's see. Think that was just a decision made by the planning board, or we wrote this. Where should there be permitted?
But, but what, what is the difference between something that is permitted and something which is a conditional use?
You must meet all the conditional use standards, or you don't have to meet that same standards if you're permitted.
So in the business districts, you don't have to, I'm, I'm very confused. It, it, it's just, you're saying that in the districts where, where contractor yard one would be included as a permitted use, that they would not have to meet the standards for a contractor yard one as delineated in nine point three point one four, is that correct?
Yeah, so it would say, as it says, are permitted uses, contractor yards are permitted uses in the ARBI and DB two districts, and conditional uses in the R4 and SO district, provided the operation performs the spacing of requirements, performances standard, and the standards of section nine, three, fourteen, four, be allowed. And so these specific standards go into it.
Still like...
I'm asking a really basic question.
Right.
What is the difference between a permitted use and a conditional use? Conditional uses more strict.
Right, it's kind of, it's got much more scrutiny into the application, you know. I'm, I guess I'm confused because you sat with us and, and sort of delineated conditional uses versus permitted uses.
Yep.
So I, I, I mean, you, you of all people understand what the, what the criteria are for a conditional use approval versus a permitted use approval.
Okay, which gets the point of why is a contractor yard a permitted use in some zones and a conditional use in others?
Because like Tad said, in, yeah, what's going to be the impact on the, the neighboring properties? So, any, any other comment on this?
I just refer again to page one, one oh nine, and if the contractor storage yard is no longer listed in the R4 district as a conditional or a permitted use, which it was at some previous version. I'm just wondering why it took it out of the R4.
In the R4, it wouldn't be in the R4 because we haven't made any changes to the R4.
It was at some point in the R4.
No, it wasn't, honestly, it wasn't, because when we changed from the matrix over, we had to do exactly the way it was in the matrix. And we hadn't, we hadn't, and one of the complaints that was made in one of the applications was that we didn't have them specified on the table of uses, which is why we're doing this in the first place, is to make sure that what's specified in this is also on the table of uses.
So why, why did we decide to add them in a two acre R2 zone, but not in a two acre R3 zone? Or in a larger R4 zone that would probably be less interference in from the neighbors? You know, if you're in a larger zone, you have all these requirements for buffering. I would assume that it would be easier to buffer in a larger zone.
Wouldn't it be because it's considered a more environmentally sensitive area, or it tended to be treated as such?
Yeah.
R4 known versus the others more environmentally.
Rural conservation?
They're conditional uses in the R4 zone.
They are?
Contractor yard two is initially uses in the R4 zone.
That's not, that's not listed on this.
It's on page one oh seven, Tad.
Right.
Yep. Well, but it's on one fifty...
Yeah, it's on one fifty.
You're confusing, what's happening is there's two different, there's two different sections of this ordinance. One pertains to existing, and one pertains to new. That's, that's where you get into confusion. In the existing, it's those that exist anywhere.
I'm thinking, I'm talking about the new use, which would be covered on page one.
Yes, R4.
It's not on page one.
Yeah, it is, and page fifty, one fifty-five.
What is page one fifty-five? It's not, I mean...
Section then.
The uses aren't listed.
Why is it being, if you want to add it, why don't you add it on the changes you've got to the places where you say you're going to have, and they're already listed?
It's not a change.
Which page are you looking?
One fifty-seven.
Is there one fifty-seven?
Yeah.
I just assumed that the land use districts and the, the, the uses in those districts would be the uses that are listed in the district section. But that's in some ways superseded and not superseded on a different page that I'm not looking at correctly?
No, no, you, you, actually, this, what, the question you're asking is exactly what should be getting fixed.
Right.
And, and you, you asked a very good consor- sure.
No.
I'm just trying to find where, what page you're finding this in.
It does not, I, 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 I thought the, the point of this was to clean up the discrepancy between what is on page one fifty-five under four A. I don't remember the, all the numbers that come before that. Which specifically says contractor yard two operations commencing after June tenth, two thousand and fifteen are permitted uses in the ARBI, DB two districts, and conditional uses in the R4 and SO districts. On page one oh seven, we have the conditional uses for the R4. And it's not listed there. That's, that's what we're, that's what you, forgive me, but I, I thought that's what we were fixing, was the, the disconnect between page, between section six point one zero point two and section nine point one three, whatever the heck it is, one four, four A.
No, and so...
I mean, it would be great to have that be in alignment.
Yeah.
So the average person can interpret.
I thought, I thought that, I thought that was what was getting fixed. And I, I'm sorry, I just realized that this...
Right, no, no, I know.
I, I just realized this isn't fixing that.
Right.
Because they...
And that's, that's, that's what I mentioned earlier, that that's, you know, that, that point was made almost with one of the very first comments. And we're going to bring that up as we get into board discussion.
So as far as these changes here, five of them already exist on the correct pages for your six point numbers. For one, adding it to the R3 zone to match what you have for contractor yard one is in addition. R4 should also be added to contractor storage one as a, as a permitted use, as a conditional use.
Right, yep.
And R4 as a conditional use.
Yeah.
So there should be at least three of those changes.
Right.
I'm just saying that if R3 is applicable, what's the difference in R2?
R2, exactly. Understood. That's... Any more comment on this?
One last one. I'm sorry.
And I'm just going to make a comment.
I mean, is, is, is it something that has not been already discussed?
It's, it's an opinion. I, I think the town needs to hire a third-party contractor to go through the land use ordinance and clean up the discrepancies and the conflicts. Because we have spent so much time here tonight going over inconsistencies. And in my opinion, the only way that's going to get fixed is if the town hires somebody, legal counsel or whatever, to go through it and identify piece by piece the conflicts and recommend certain wording that would resolve it so we don't have to come here and bring these points out.
So I would...
There's nothing you can do, this is just a public comment.
Yep, and, and hopefully you have two select people in the room, they will hear that, and they can make note of that with any budgetary items that they want to.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, okay. Any more on item five, dare I ask?
I have, I have a final, and I promise I'm... In the conditional use application that is on your website, and I believe is the one that you would ask someone to complete. Is that a safe statement? Okay, it still lists conditions of section nine point seven, excerpts from the land use ordinance. We don't have a nine seven, we stop at nine seven.
So that, that if I'm correct, can be changed by staff pretty much at any time.
You might want, just because again, you've now got someone who might be trying to fill out a conditional use application and pull it off the website. They go to the land use ordinance and they say, wait a minute, what am I supposed to be doing?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We are going to close the public hearing for item five and open the public hearing for item six, elimination of correctional pre-release facilities from land use ordinance three point two and the ordinance.
To the chair, mark your time.
Kind of six.
Nine oh six, sorry, thank you.
I...
Appreciate it. Quick synopsis on that?
The board decided they want correctional pre-release facilities in the town.
That's it. Any comment?
Yay.
Hearing none. We will close that public hearing at nine oh seven and open the public hearing for item seven, amendment to land use ordinance ten point six point three point six, increasing the length of requested extensions from thirty to sixty days in the site plan review process.
The board has run into a situation where the idea of having thirty-day extensions was primarily to ensure that the board acted in a quick and reasonably fat, rapid fashion so as not to delay applicants. The board has since determined that in some cases applicants need more than those thirty days. And also given the, the variations in the calendar, that you, thirty days usually isn't a convenient time period. The board decided to double that to two sixty-day extensions. Then an applicant may ask the board to refrain from making a decision because the current standard is that the board must make a decision within thirty days of a public hearing. And this would allow an applicant who runs into a problem during the public hearing process to have additional time to correct that problem that, that may arise at a public hearing. So it's to also be advantageous to the applicant as well as to ensure that the board acts in a responsible and rapid fashion. And it is only an extension that is, that is granted to the applicant before it's not granted additional extensions.
Any comment on that proposed change? Hearing none, we'll close public hearing at nine oh nine. We will move into item eight, the public hearing for the Rundle Farm Stand, major conditional use application. Proposal to construct a 1,020 square foot farm retail building serviced by 480-foot-long commercial driveway with two parking areas containing 20 parking spaces on a 2.02 acre parcel located on Portland Road, tax map thirty-six, lot thirteen in the DB one district. Peter Faulkner, trustee, is the owner, and Ed and Sarah LeBlanc are the applicants. I've always liked public hearings where the applicant does a very short description of what you're doing to thereby inform the public of what's going on. So, but I would say that's, keep it brief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jason Mathiatus here representing Ed, Sarah, and LeBlanc for the Rundle Farm Stand. Very small seasonal business, I think you're probably familiar with farm stands. It's nice little cottage-looking buildings, professional out the front. VIP autos up here. I forget the name of the business, no idea.
The veterinary clinic?
Yes.
Me and Memorial Clinic.
US Route one up the front, and then I believe the US Route one extension or Senate Road runs right through here. Oh, sorry, runs right through there. Any questions or comments?
Yep.
Any comment?
We will, in hearing no comments, we will close that public hearing at nine ten. We will move into, for section five, recommendation to the board of selection of the different items that we discussed, the land use ordinance revisions we discussed previously. Item one, revision of land use ordinance thirteen point two, and amendment of the land use map to transfer Hidden Meadows subdivision from the BI district to the R2 district. This is comment and discussion to the board.
I'm going to pass it on to the selectmen for one.
Second.
Second? Motion made in second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item two, adoption of land use ordinance nine point three point six, commercial animal husbandry, farms and associated definitions to be adopted to land use ordinance three point two. Tad, question on this, any, as we talked about, any substantive revision essentially pushes out to a new public hearing and thereby misses a...
Town meeting.
Town meeting, you know, timeframe.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, the selectmen have...
Yeah.
Dan, what do you, what's your, what's your work on?
Don't we sign it, will we?
Yeah.
Is it on the agenda for Monday night?
It's on the agenda to, to sign it for Monday. But I don't know how much time we have if it has to be signed by Monday, I don't know if it'll last.
That's true. Yeah. Well, it's gonna be seven days before the meeting at the very least. Maybe on the board.
Be not that big of a deal, but, you know, the book is also gonna run out and he's using the new book.
Yeah, and that's, and I have to go and pull this stuff out of the book too at this point. So, it would be, I mean, if you wanted to do a public hearing, I'd have to advertise that we wouldn't be able to do it till the thirtieth of May. We'd have to have a special meeting on the thirtieth of May.
The what date?
Thirtieth. I mean, unless we were doing it on another day, but if you even wanted to make those changes, we would do it. We would advertise to have a public hearing on the sixteenth, second public hearing with revisions on the sixteenth. And then we would, um, have a meeting on the thirtieth of May. That's the only other way. And if it's assuming that, that you went ahead with that and the, the selectmen would go along with that, then we can make the town to, to those changes we talked about.
Would that, would any changes that we discussed be able to get published in the, the warrant articles?
Yeah, we would have to do it tonight or we'd have to have special.
Someone is getting ready to submit, uh, the town block, yeah, publishing.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But again, if that's not, if it's, if it's in that book and it's not on a warrant, I don't think that, that, that's really that big of a deal.
Well, that's what I, what I should have been the last annual, that's what they want.
What's that?
That's what I have been with the last annual, that's what they want.
Well, it's better, it's better that if we don't have a vote on it and it's in a block versus the other way around.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, but that would be much worse, yeah.
The question came up and just refreshed my memory, was this version distributed to the Department of Agriculture?
Yes, it was.
That's what I thought, but I just, I knew the question came up and I wasn't sure if it was clearly answered.
And expedited.
Yep.
Have we heard anything better?
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, okay.
Have we followed up?
Mr. Chairman, Chip, does I have any questions?
Yeah.
I, I, I hesitate to bring this up, I forgot about the state. Do you think any changes, if you have to submit the new version of the state and that, that would make it impossible to get it, the regulations taken from the, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're not.
What changes would be dramatic different, I guess the question?
The, yeah, the, the two that I had, had noted was the potential for clarification on the setback of a manure storage area to a, any water supply.
And then just the definition of the manure management.
Right.
Program, uh, and in terms of how we defined it and, uh, referring people to the right place.
I know I could call them and ask, ask them to vote if that would be sufficient.
I mean, I think those are worthwhile, uh, changes.
It would not sort of, uh, concur that simply adding some generic language referencing, uh, the plan currently applicable means statutes would be sufficient?
Yeah.
I mean, it's implied in there, I'm saying, but.
So, um, Chip's suggestion, and we can find a word for current. If, uh, using that opens a door to delays. But Chip had said a nutrient management plan needs to be provided when required by the state of Maine. And rather than saying specific statutes, we would point them to the section where the statutes are normally codified.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agree with that because it's such a broad, entitled, it's so broad.
The specific thing that I look at isn't a statute. It, it's regulations propagated by the running department of agriculture.
Right.
And I, I think it would be easy to, to refer to that.
And so we just need to find the place where that would be.
Or you just say as to, as to find.
Well, I mean, it, I'm, I'm sorry, there, there is a main nutrient management law.
That.
But, but.
My guess of a law, it probably doesn't get into the particulars of when a nutrient management plan is required and when it's not and for what types of operations.
I, I actually.
I think it is.
I don't know, I'm, but my, but I, I just think, my personal belief is that the town should not, if there is a requirement for nutrient management plan, then it is not required by the state of Maine.
Back into the public hearing.
Right.
I wouldn't push this thing, but I think it's been pushed so many times.
And the other, the other issue is the threshold there of how it's delineated, commercial farm versus non-commercial.
Well, do you wanna pull it?
I think we should, actually, I hate to say that.
Marty, your thoughts?
My thought is after two years of this, point blank, and going around circle and circles and everything else. We've tried to do everything right, we've had, opened it up to everybody else along the way. There might be a word here or a punctuation out of place or anything else. If we're gonna do it, let's put it through without turning it in, uh, making another year contention out of this.
Yeah, I, I would concur, it's an improvement over what there is and it doesn't mean it's not.
Hundred percent.
Continue to be a, a work in progress and we can continue to refine it, but it's better than what there is. Wouldn't you occur, wouldn't you agree?
Sorry, is it good attorney?
Yes.
Ask the question you would answer to.
Wow, now he didn't say no. Didn't say no.
Yeah, Dan.
Is there, um, is this, does this affect anybody right now? I mean, is there something that?
Any particular individuals, there, there, there is one, there is one farmer that, that would benefit from this thing passing.
So, I mean.
And I, I, Mr. Chairman, may I add one, one statement?
May I finish first?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I, I guess I would agree with Marty, um, it's not right, I think it needs to have some work. And, you know, I don't like putting regulations where we gotta go back and look at them again. Um, but I think, you know, the, there's some small pieces here that can be added at a different time. My suggestion would be on the default. And with the, you know, I should change substantive changes that you can.
And assuming also that, that, that the state does not consider this to be substantive enough to start the clock all over again on this.
Could we?
Which I won't know till tomorrow.
Oh, sorry. Could we say gross profit as opposed to net profit?
Or gross revenue?
Well, it grossed profits.
That lowers the threshold, that goes the other way.
Well, we know.
And we beat this to death at the other meeting.
We did.
That's how we were gonna do this. And as my fourteen year old says, we spend hours and hours on debating this. We make a decision and then we go back the next meeting and we change it again, which kinda defeats the purpose. And we, we're, we're beating a dead horse.
Well, I mean, 'cause net profit is basically meaningless. You could have a business that grows as fifty million dollars a year and have a net profit of under fifteen thousand.
Well, then that should have been discussed at the other meetings, but waiting until it's ready to go to town meeting to try to change something, which to be quite honest, no one's gonna look at it unless there's a complaint. Because we're not gonna go look at anybody's taxes or what their profit or nonprofit is unless there's a complaint about a business. So, I don't see the sense in penalize, penalizing a farm who's been waiting for this to get passed forever.
And I agree with you and I think, but I think at some point we need to figure out what the right term is that we wanna use so that we can, there's a measurement there that has meaning. I totally agree with you, I mean, I would vote for it and put it in and we'll, we'll find it later. So, nobody has to wait any longer, I'm fine with that.
So, uh. As to water supply, um, is that, is that a hundred feet from a household septic to a well?
The household is, but the, but strangely enough, in the world of, of animal husbandry, it's less. We came to a seventy five, seventy five is what the state says. They can't even hear it.
Could we say any well as opposed?
So, that's from, but that's from the feeding and grazing area.
Yeah, the water supply.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you could do the same thing in setback from manure storage, composting is still seventy five.
We went round and round on that by a hundred feet or whatever, but we had the state by.
It's a hundred feet, it's a hundred feet for a septic system, that's what happened. And that's an arbitrary number, to be honest, it depends on the soil.
And we beat this one to death too.
Yeah, I think we looked at all the things and seventy five feet seemed to be the, the right meeting place.
I think the state will require more.
But I thought we, I thought we verified that the state had it at seventy five feet.
I think that was, that was not the compost, that was the, you know, water supply. That was the water supply, not the compost. So, it was where the graze and how far they could be and, and the compost, the actual compost pile, we did not. So, that's what the, the reference is to the compost pile.
So, could, could that be, could, could water supply be added into that last, last, uh, row?
Yes, water supply.
Well, a public hearing, now the public hearing?
Yep.
Then you, we, we need a public hearing anyways.
Why?
Because we're making changes.
What changes?
These changes. Any change that was made to it that's not.
I felt the question was, it's just.
Dramatic or something like that.
Huh?
We have to, we have to have another public hearing. So, if we do this, then we, if you wanna do this and the state says they won't reset the clock on this, then we have to have a public hearing on the thirtieth and I have to get in to, actually make all these changes again into.
And then has to go back to the state.
And this would be the only item on the public hearing, so we could get this thing kicked out?
And if you wanna change the other stuff.
Oh.
Yet we haven't gotten to the other things yet.
Yeah.
So, why don't we just say, these are the changes you want to make and then, and then say.
And are there changes that need to be made? Because if we don't make town meeting, this thing is not gonna go in front of anybody for another year.
Not necessarily.
You should have a special time.
You could have a special time.
Right, we don't have one scheduled, so it could possibly be another year that this poor farmer puts up with everything he's putting up with because we couldn't get it to town meeting.
Lord knows we tried.
So, ultimately, from a timing standpoint, the biggest risk is what the state would say.
Yeah, unless.
Then, I mean, I think, I think we, you know, I don't think what we're proposing here is a, is a huge change.
That's what I'll ask the commissioner's office about tomorrow.
And so what would happen if we left it the way it was with the understanding that we were gonna go back and revise it and make it available for the next town meeting?
I think you probably have some flack at town meeting.
For doing, by doing, for doing that.
By not making amendments, yeah.
About, but which amendments? Which amendments do you think you're gonna have flack about?
Well, the same.
Fifteen thousand, I think we're gonna have flack.
Right, the, the delineation, the, the income delineation, we knew that was gonna be an issue, the water supply and then the requirement for the nutrient management plan.
Well, I, to be quite honest, I don't think it's gonna matter what you're gonna put, whether it's net gross fifteen, five hundred thousand, two thousand. I don't think it's really gonna matter what you're gonna put there. I think a lot of it depends on how you explain it to them, how it affects them and what happens if we don't have it, then they're stuck with what we have today, which is nothing. So, I think you ought to take it the way it is unless they allow you to make changes that don't require a town meet, another public hearing.
So, the, to me, the, the risk in that is you either, you've got a proposed change here that we've gotten substantial public comment on, that we can either go forward as is and not have to worry about the state or make some changes, what I think are fairly minor changes. Unfortunately, it'll still require a local public hearing, but hopefully Tad will be able to work with state staff to not prolong their review any more than it would have to be. Do you have a decent, any sense on that?
I, I have a good working relationship with Matt Randall, who's the compliance officer. But I will, I will talk to, go, talk to commissioner's office directly.
I mean, we.
Call the commission, or deputy commission, oh, I am, yeah, so.
And ultimately, we need to make the decision tonight on what to do, so, Donna?
I think particularly regarding the distance of manure compost storage from water supply, I think that's a really important change. The other change having to do with the nutrient management plan, that's almost a matter of phrasing. So, that one is a little less important. And in so far as the fifteen thousand or forty percent, as I recall our discussions, those are random numbers. It doesn't matter what the numbers are because nobody can check and it's unenforceable. So, any numbers we put there, assuming, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of not putting numbers at all, but, you know, any numbers that go in there are a ridiculous way to gauge this. You know, you either have a large operation or you don't. And that should be self-evident from what you're doing, not how much money you're making or not making. And with regards to, you know, how to go from here, my suggestion would be if we have time for another public hearing, make the changes, do the other public hearing and put this out in June. And it will either fly or it will go down in flames, but at least we'll know if it goes out in flames is what we need to look at the next time around.
I'm with Donna, I think that's the right approach, especially on that.
You had Chip hand up too.
Yep.
For sure.
I mean, I think the fifteen thousand dollars net gross, gross, you know, it's, it's semantics, I mean, 'cause they're, they're, it's all meaningless, 'cause you're never gonna check what it is. So, maybe we can come up with some language that actually means something.
You're gonna have to check when the first person comes in and says he wants to be.
Right.
We need a trigger.
Eventually, you're gonna have to come up with a number that has, or a process or a formula that has meaning. I mean, there's only so many times you can keep saying, nobody's gonna check, it doesn't really matter. 'Cause at some point.
But you have to do it initially.
It's going to matter, we've gotta get the language right, I mean.
The very first time the guy comes in and he wants it for fall days, you're gonna have to do it initially, somebody's gonna have to do it. You say, you gotta prove that he's fifteen thousand dollars old. If, if somebody wants to have a farm, have this operation, they're gonna, they're gonna have the books that show that they're over fifteen thousand, right? What kind of book? They're just, look, the books that show, show the IRS, the books you got.
Yes.
Listen, if Trump is not handing over his tax right here, you think? That's what I said, the other books.
Okay, so, it seems like we've got at least a consensus on the board to make these changes and go forth to a public hearing, is that same?
I, I remember what I wanted to say, if I may, which is it, is it possible for the board to, to have, uh, go forward with a contingency where if Tad speaks with the representatives of the state and the representatives of the state say, sorry, these, these proposed changes are, are too much and you, you need to resubmit and restart the sixty day clock, the sixty day clock, right, Ted?
Yeah.
Restart the sixty day. Restart the sixty-day clock, then take what you have to town meeting, as it exists. However, if the people at the state tomorrow say, well, you're, you're making it a little more restrictive in terms of location of newer storage relative to a well, and you're being a little more clear about the nutrient management plan, and making, conforming with the State Department of Agriculture guidelines, who is the outfit that Tad is going to be talking to, I'm not quite sure how they could object to that, then, then you go ahead and have a public hearing with changes. What I, I, I'm, I'm sensitive, can I ask a brief question? I'm sensitive to the one, one operation that I'm aware of that will benefit from these changes. I think it's a benefit to the town as a whole if that operation is allowed to continue and in fact expand its operations. So I'm suggesting a contingency plan if Tad gets pushed back from the state. Just take it the way to town meeting, the way it is, if you have to.
I mean, is that, we've got, I think-
I have to make the call. I'm going to have to make the call.
I mean, but we, we have to make a decision as a board, right, to either-
You're making a contingency, you're saying, look, if it's, if it's looking negative from the state, then pull.
No, no, leave it the way it is.
Then go in one way or the other, right, either with or without the changes.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
That's the contingency. If he says no, then just leave it the way it is.
And it goes anywhere, goes as it-
Let it go, and we'll fix it later.
Can somebody make a motion there?
I did.
Can we say it out loud? Go ahead, Marty.
I said, Tara, it's time to put this on the warrant. And as is, as long as the state agrees in not starting the clock over again.
No, 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 not even do it. So we'll leave it as is.
All right, somebody rephrase it for me then, please.
So Tad has a contingency plan. He's going to offer these changes to the state. I move that Tad offers these changes to the state with the understanding, if we get pushed back, we will submit the, the-
Warrant as is.
As is.
Discussion, you'll submit to the selectmen.
Correct, but Tad will take the temperature of the state, and then the selectmen can make whatever decision they decide.
So, so we have a second by Yance? Any further discussion?
Yes, that if they approve less than all three things, then we send it with what they do approve that doesn't require a public, a further, further-
Public hearing?
No.
Further with the-
Department of Agriculture.
About the state.
Correct.
Yes, and we can do with the net gross.
You're amending it?
So I'm, I, I would suggest this is an amended motion, so accordingly?
Okay, I move to amend my motion accordingly.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
So, any, so any discussion on the motion to amend the motion?
No.
None, heard? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Hopefully, we did that right. Okay.
It sounds good.
Next.
Next is amendments to land use ordinance six point one, urban residential district R one. These were the cleanup actions. There was-
I would have a proposal, if we really go to it, if we go to a public hearing on this, which I think we might only do, have the second public hearing that we put in commercial-
Yeah, that's where I was, right, that's where I was going. Yeah. So, add commercial animal husbandry farms as a, is that under conditional use?
We are one.
And you missed it, that we are going to let you have sixty days instead of thirty days. I was very disappointed in what you're saying.
We were waiting for you to open that.
A cup of powder.
Any, any further discussion on the R one changes?
No.
No. Okay.
I need a motion in order to move forward. Okay, I move that we, some of that to the warrant.
Will be amended?
Will be amended.
I second that.
Do we have to have a public hearing on it? Because you changed it? Just make sure it gets scheduled so we don't miss our deadlines.
The problem is that they're Monday, they're getting, I think we got, getting it by Tuesday, that's-
Any more discussion from the board on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The analysts?
And I would say if, if the state gives me a bad, bad answer tomorrow, then this goes as it is.
Yeah, see, if you have them to accept it, or whatever they're willing to accept.
What I'm saying is that commercial, the R one goes as it is.
Right, if, if the, if we're not going to have a public hearing, then we need to move forward with six point one as, as drafted and advertised originally. Next, yes, it does, good. Where were we? Item four, amendments to land use ordinance three point two, definition of home occupations and repeal and replacement of nine point three point twenty-four home occupations to identify type one and type two home occupation activities. I don't have any notes on that.
Yeah, so for the, for the, it was a little bit out of, out of order.
No, but what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't have any, any notes, no, that one, that one was controversial.
No, I think that went through.
So, our next step should be easy.
That was quick.
Move to the, send to the selectmen.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got, you got somebody backed.
Oh, Donna? I, I hate to do this, but just back up a second. Did you just decide that if we don't need a public hearing on the commercial animal husbandry farm, then you're going to leave the R one listing as is?
If, no, well, I said, if the state says that you're going to have to resubmit the CAPS system, and we're going to start the clock all over again, then we'll do R one the way it is right now.
So that means we will not have a commercial animal?
Right, because we're not going to have it, right, anyway.
Okay, I, I got lost in that discussion. I don't know how that happened. Thank you.
Okay, item five, amendments to land use ordinance nine point three point fourteen point two to extend the deadline for registration of existing contractor yards and addition of contractor yards to the list of permitted and conditional uses in the residential and rural districts.
In the warrants, I separated that out, I separated these two in the warrants. Which, it's actually sort of, they were not-
Item five is, is sort of a five A and B.
In the warrants, I actually separated the, the extension from the addition of permitting use table issues. So that's all by itself, that, that one there is all by itself, and then the rest is on another one?
Yeah.
So the extension is one warrant, and then the changes to the land use table are in a separate one.
And I would assume the changes to the landscaping are in, and among the changes to permitted uses or the district boundaries, like things?
It's all good to go. So in that, we need to change, solve that problem, the conflict problem, with just basically taking what is shown on four, going back to, because the, the intent is just to deal with the ordinance currently says, so-
The intent is to take what's in nine point whatever.
Nine three fourteen.
Right, and mimic that in the individual districts.
Which would be C, which would be, let's see, would be three, would be nine three fourteen three, contractor yard one, and then contractor yard two, which is four. And get that first paragraph, so it would be the districts that would be included are really, it would be R four district for contractor one, R three and R four, and then, and that's the one we pulled out. And then, which is in four, which is going to be SO four, R four is how it's called, for the residential districts.
So ultimately, I mean, because of the comment around the, sort of, how this was described, that would, if we make any modifications to this, it would require another public hearing.
I think we're heading that way, isn't it?
Sounds like it, but if, if we are going that way, I want to make sure we're clear on what, right, what we need to, to do.
That it will reflect four, three A and four A applicability in both those sections, which would be, if you want to write it down?
Well, do the chair to ask questions.
Yes, sir.
Now we've just discovered that it's under two separate warrants. The way the public hearing we're showing tonight was under one warrant.
No, it was a topic. So, so they break these warrants up sometimes. They set the warrant, you know, they set the warrant, and they break them. You guys have broken them up in the past.
Yeah, so if you wanted to make a motion on changing the date itself, you could, and then-
Well, and that's, then that's what I was getting ready to suggest, is why don't we, why don't we tackle that proposed warrant change right off the bat?
When?
Right now. Remember, we've got fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So, um-
So what exactly do we need to do?
What I would like is if anybody agrees to move, if applicable, to approve the warrant to extend the date to August one, twenty twenty.
For the registration of existing contractor yards.
Yep.
Distinctly.
Well, as Tad said, that's a, that has been sent over and going to be advertised as a separate warrant, our article, then the changes. So, under that info, let's, let's tackle that item right now, if everybody sees fit.
I think that's good. Do I have a motion?
Yep.
I move we submit it as such to the selectmen discreetly.
Aye.
So just to clarify that, we submit the motion to-
To the extension.
The extension, the extension, right?
Yeah, the extension, as you, you're right with us, the extension be a separate warrant from-
And Marty, you seconded that?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now on to the second part of that conversation, in which we had a number sort of questions that came up about where different yards were proposed to be allowed and not. And Ted, where is that in sec, all the land use districts right here?
Nine three fourteen three, for contractor yard one, right, three fourteen three?
Yep.
And that would be AR, BI, DB two, R, yep, permitted.
Yep.
And then, um, DB warrant, SO one?
Yep.
TC, R three, and R four, R four are conditional. And then we go over to-
At R one, what's in R one?
It's out there.
Is there not permitted?
A new one is not permitted.
Then, then we go over to R, we go to four A, which is the next page.
Yep.
That was already there, you'll see is permitted, it's going to be AR, BI, DB two.
Yep.
These are permitted, and then R four, and SO are conditional.
Right.
Okay, and we work that table.
We work that and have that for public hearing when we do the other question.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yes.
Marty, I'm sorry.
Question is, if you have an existing business along the way, and with the extension that we just gave to reapply for a contractor yard, and even though he's in R one, he can apply?
No, that's not, that's not correct. If that extension's passed, then the performance standards for existing contractor yards would apply to that person, not the new standards, not the performance standards for a new contractor yard, which doesn't allow for it in, say, the R one.
So you'd be grandfathered.
Right.
Okay.
But you couldn't be a, you couldn't move to town and want to open-
Right, but they're already here.
So, so the, so the performance standards for existing contractor yards has an allowance for a registered contractor yard in R one, two, three, four, and maybe others, so.
Go ahead. Is it possible for the board to approve the amendments that were listed for the public hearing tonight? Go ahead, go ahead and approve them, and then if, it sounds likely, there is a public hearing on May thirty, if you correct the other, you, you simply add to the warrant the, the additional corrections that are needed.
When I was there, one that was-
That was R four, I think, in, in section six point one zero, it's on page one seven.
Right, well, I'm looking at, at this, we're six, five, one, I'm just looking at it, I was thinking most of what was listed here was listed already. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if going forth with what we have in these bulleted items here is going to really do much for us.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Correct, that's right.
I was going to, sorry, I apologize.
All right, um, so we need, Ted has the listing. Do we really, do we need a motion for that because we're going to be bringing it back forth to a public hearing?
You need to, 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 basically authorize me to make these changes, because they have to advertise before you go to the end.
Right.
So are we pretty good on six and seven, so we can get to the pending applications? Because we have to be out of here by ten o'clock, don't we?
Three o'clock, and we have seven minutes left, and we have pending applications.
And maybe we can get one out of the night.
Um, well, let's, let's tidy up the, let's tidy up what we have here for contractor yards. So we need a motion that has a public hearing.
Okay, I'm happy to make the motion. We, we authorize the planner to make the identified provisions to assure clarity and consistency throughout the ordinance as to the permissibility or conditional allowance for contractor yards in the various districts. allowance for contractor yards in various districts.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? On the motion? Hearing none, all, and did you, did we need to note the date of the public hearing?
Nine thirty.
Okay. So. No discussion, all in favor?
Yeah, I'm just trying to move it on.
Me too, because everybody's been sitting here, it's been terrible.
Um, so we have item six, elimination of correctional pre-release facilities from the land use ordinance three point two.
Move, put it on the warrant, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then item seven, then it's the land use ordinance ten point six, point three, point six, increasing the length of requested extension from thirty to sixty days in the sentencing process.
Put it on the warrant.
Agreed, and I second that.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
None of the warrants to.
Move it forward.
To move it, yeah, yeah.
No, I stand corrected, move it to the selectmen, so they can put it on the warrant.
Alright.
I second that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have five minutes. Question for the board.
Just observation, but you get people here tonight with consultants that just spinning the clock, in the future, anytime you've got business to deal with, it ought to be on the front of your agenda, or don't schedule it, because this is asinine, folks, this doesn't help your reputation.
Thank you, Roger. How are we gonna, we, in five minutes, do you think we?
Do you have a ten o'clock cut off time, or is it because of school?
I, I think she, I can go around.
I think she said she can stay till ten.
There are, if we break the place down and put it back together, that's what I agree with.
Okay, so let's see what you have to talk about.
Out to school, we have to put this all back together again.
So, yeah.
Afterward.
Afterward. You don't have time?
Eight four, ten thirty. She usually likes us out by ten twenty, she, it's ten twenty, really, it's nice, but we can, we can push her.
Trying to go through the farm stand?
I'll be quick.
Go ahead. Well, let me do what I gotta do. Item one, pending applications, Arundel Farm Stand, major conditional use application. Proposal to construct a one thousand twenty square foot farm retail building serviced by a four hundred and eighty foot long commercial driveway with two parking areas containing twenty parking spaces on a two point zero two acre parcel located on Portland Road, tax map thirty six, lot thirteen. The DB one district, Peter Faulkner, trustee, is the owner, and Ed and Sarah LeBlanc are the applicants.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the planning board, I'm Jason Fialas, representing Ed and Sarah LeBlanc. I believe in our last meeting, there were two, two or three outstanding items. The two major ones were the DEP and Army Corps Engineer, Nerf atier one wetland bill permits, we have received those as of today. I'm giving a copy to Ted right now.
Thank you.
The other outstanding items were the design standards for the, uh, the DB one zone. I have submitted to Ted, which copies you got now, of the landscape plan and the architectural details, perimeter dimensions and materials of the proposed project.
Ten thirty, and she'd appreciate if we could put the table back.
Do you have any questions, on anything? So Ted, the outstanding issues. There were those permits.
Nice night, that'd use a million fine glass.
I have to tell you what, what the plans are.
I, I know.
You, you saw them.
So.
So this is not going to open up to, to wave the. Oh, there it is, oh, sorry. It's going to open up like water breaks, it's going to, you work on it?
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll, basically, the, the door will open like water breaks, they're on there.
Stuff will come out.
Yep, yeah, onto that front porch.
Yep.
In looking at your comments, there seems to be a discrepancy on whether we can waive the landscaping requirement?
They have landscaping.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't.
Oh, this is, this is all.
Yeah, that's all they got.
Okay, so that's been.
That way, that way, dude.
All right, so you're good with the landscaping?
A lot of it's going to grow back up, you're probably going to have that frame line just grow back up anyways, you know, keep holding that.
It'll be, it'll look nice.
Bush hog.
Yeah, well, he'll hide, hide the building.
All right.
Bush hog.
So, we are all set, with no comments at the public hearing? Uh, any?
Start reading.
Issues for reviewing this? All right.
How much is it going to cost?
Uh, the.
Site.
Oh, the site?
Yeah.
Uh, eight four, I don't know.
For the site?
For the site work?
Yeah, are you doing the landscaping? There's nothing.
Might not be nothing then, but it's a lot to us.
No, 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 landscaping is nothing. As in comparisons.
Yeah, we had to work hard to get the numbers down.
Yep. All right. So, you get through all of that, right? Whereas on April twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a site plan pre-application from Ed and Sarah LeBlanc to construct a one thousand twenty square foot farm retail building serviced by four hundred and eighty foot long commercial driveway with two parking areas containing twenty parking spaces on a two point zero two acre parcel located on Portland Road, tax map thirty six, lot thirteen in the DB one district. Whereas on February twenty first, two thousand nineteen, the planning board conducted a site walk of the subject parcel, planning board. Whereas on April twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan application for the proposed project. Whereas on May ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with section ten point six, point three, point three of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision, findings of fact. The owner and applicant is Peter Faulkner, and the applicant, the owner and the applicant is Peter Faulkner, and the applicant is Ed and Sarah LeBlanc. The owner is just Faulkner, right? Okay. Property is located on Portland Road, tax map thirty six, lot thirteen in the DB one district. Property is approximately two point zero two acres in size and is characterized by non-burdened, poorly drained soils and emergent wetlands. Vegetation punctuated by upland swath of gravel in the middle of the lot that was the base material of a driveway or road. Four, the applicant proposes to build a one thousand twenty square foot farm retail building near the, the frontage with Portland Road within the designated wetland area supported by a driveway and parking both near the proposed farm stand and further to the southeast at the terminus of a four hundred and eighty foot driveway. Five, the farm stand is also proposed to contain wash and bathroom facilities and will be serviced by a septic system to the rear of the lot on the gravel deposits. H H E two hundred permit has been prepared by James Logan. Six, the farm stand will be serviced by public water from Kennybunk, Kennybunkport Wells Water District and electrical service supplied from existing poles on Portland Road. Seven, the facility would not be installing any outdoor lighting for the parking lot. Eight, at the request of the planning board, the applicant has prepared an assessment of the wetlands, both on the property and off-site, and determined that based on the contiguous rules in land use ordinance eight point six point two, the existing wetlands do not qualify as a shoreland overlay district. The amount of fill within the emergent wetland will not exceed the four thousand three hundred fifty square foot required for a DEP wetlands alterations permit. Nine, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan that meets the requirements of land use ordinance five point nine point five and six point four point eight. Ten, the design of the proposed farm building meets the design standards of six point four point four. Eleven, documentation provided by the applicant include an existing, extended conditions plan, a site plan, a grading utility plan, and layout plan, and a detail sheet prepared by Atlantic Resources Consultants and dated January seventh, two thousand nineteen with revisions. Performance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in performance with the criteria of ten point six point four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. One, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning districts, district, and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. Two, the proposed project will require no additional permits from the state of Maine aside from a driveway entrance permit from the N D O T. Three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood. Four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite or, and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resource, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. Eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that, based on the above finding and conclusions of the Arundel Planning Board, hereby approves the plenary site plan of Anderson Farms Farm Stand to construct a one thousand twenty square foot farm retail building serviced by a four hundred and eighty foot long commercial driveway with two parking areas containing twenty parking spaces on a two point zero two acre parcel located on Portland Road, tax map lot thirty six, tax map thirty six, lot thirteen in the DB, DB one district, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of, what, what was the price?
What's that?
For the, for the site work.
Oh, eighty, yeah, right around there.
Eighty-four. So is that, that number?
Yep.
Eighty-four thousand, in compliance with land use ordinance ten point seven prior to commencement of construction. Two, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to commencement of site work, and no site work shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil stabilization mechanisms prescribed herein are made effective. Three, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the code enforcement officer receives a certification from the design engineer that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. I need a motion.
To accept completion and signing.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Go.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Back tonight.
I'll, yeah, I'll drop off you. Ted.
Arundel Machine.
Arundel Machine, plenary site plan review application, determination of completeness, proposal to construct a twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-three square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility located on a seven point seven six acre parcel, tax map twelve, lot seven dash three, located at twenty Technology Drive in the V I district with associated parking and site improvements. In addition, Arundel Machine also proposes to construct a new eleven thousand two hundred square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent three point seven five acre parcel, tax map twelve, lot seven dash two, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation and parking facilities on lot seven dash three. D C B Properties is the owner and applicant, and Paul Gadbois P E is the authorized agent.
So I did get a email from Bob Green saying that they did, uh, accept the project for processing as far as, uh, still another plan, actually, site plan review through D E P. And he basically just said that he's a little busy, he's got a few projects ahead of him, but hopefully by the end of the month, he should have, um, a quote that, um, trying to reshuffle, he should be the right proposal.
Okay, so.
Yeah, bet.
So looking at this, it's, it's, it's more than he's accepted it for processing, that was done probably after you submitted it.
The project is, the project is ready for me to write up for approval.
Right, so he's gotten all of the technical review components back, everything looks good, and he's now just getting into the direct, the final permit.
Correct.
Yep, okay. So, no storm waters, you know, or all of that's been resolved, you know, that type of thing.
Exactly.
How about site location?
Yeah, that's, yeah, this is. This is site location.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the only change we made, uh, based on Ted's comments, we did revise the landscaping along Route one. Um, we're going to go with the, uh, Ostrich and Pines, uh, fifteen feet on center, and then eighteen of them, five feet to six feet tall. Based on Ted's comments, the previous landscaping, the A's tend to, uh, the A tends to like to eat the foliage, and those are another project recently that we had, a bunch of those, and they were devastated, yeah. Really, really bad. Also, we changed the landscaping along Route one, that's primary, the only change we made to the plan. We did have, did have any discussion in regards to lighting, um, we're going to go with the lighting plan that submitted by Jim Stockman. If Jim's going to actually go out there and do some light metering measurements, um, if he can come up with a different plan that's super satisfying and clones. So not to put lights in the middle of the parking lot, we will come back to the planning board to revise the lighting plan, but right now, we're not so sure that's going to happen, but he's going to have to take physical measures, see if he can adjust the lighting to meet the ordinance. Based on that, we're going to go with the lighting as designed, and come back to the planning board if we need to amend it.
Okay, if you're fine, you can, yeah, you can.
Need your client.
Yep. Any outstanding issues from your end?
No, no, we're, we're there. Much there, I was happy with the statement.
Any questions from, yep, so you're happy with.
Yeah, we went out in the field, we, we took a look at it.
Any questions from the board? All good?
I'm there.
All right.
You want to carry on moving on?
Findings of fact and motion, findings of fact and. You can.
What's our final number now? Site work.
Oh, yeah. We submitted it, was, uh.
What, what is it?
I was wondering if you.
I'll have it, but I think I submitted that, but I don't know if, uh, where it was anymore.
With the landscaping?
With the landscaping, with just shy of five hundred.
Yeah.
Four ninety.
I think it's four ninety-six.
Six.
I think you're filling the blanks out here, that's right.
Paul, you going to find that, you got that with you?
Uh, I know that myself gave me the figure from.
It's four ninety-six.
I thought I turned that in and looked at the problem.
So I'll start reading, findings of fact and motion for approval, Arundel Machine Tool Company Expansion. Whereas on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan application. Whereas on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan application from D C B Properties to construct a twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-three square foot expansion to the existing Arundel Machine Tool Company. Manufacturing facility located on a seven point seven six acre parcel, tax map twelve, lot seven dash three, located at twenty Technology Drive in the B I district, with associated parking and site improvements. In addition, Arundel Machine also proposes to construct a new eleven thousand two hundred square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent three point seven five acre parcel, tax map twelve, lot seven dash two, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation and parking facilities on lot seven dash three. Whereas on April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with section ten point six from three point three of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, the owner, number one, the owner and applicant is D C B Properties LLC. Two, property is located at twenty Technology Drive, tax map twelve, lot seven dash two, and lot seven dash three in the B I district. Lot seven dash three is approximately seven point seven six acres in size, while lot seven dash two is three point seven five acres. Both lots are serviced by the existing townway Technology Drive. Five, the existing lot seven dash three property consists of a forty thousand square foot manufacturing facility and a forty-seven, one hundred twenty thousand square foot, uh, parking and loading area serviced from Technology Drive with onsite septic system and public water from K K W W Inc. The existing lot seven dash two is undeveloped. Six, the applicant proposes to construct a twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-three square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility on lot seven dash three with associated parking and site improvements, and a new eleven thousand two hundred square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent lot seven dash two, along with associated parking. Seven, vehicle movements will enter the Arundel Machine complex from Technology Drive in a one-way circulation pattern through the lot seven dash two driveway, and will exit the complex via the lot seven dash three driveway onto the cul-de-sac of Technology Drive. Eight, a traffic turning assessment prepared by traffic engineer Bill Bray dated October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, examined the increase in peak hour turning mov- movements of traffic entering and exiting Technology Drive, and determined that the peak traffic increases do not meet the M D O T warrant for a left turn lane for southbound traffic. Nine, the applicant submitted a groundwater nitrate impact study prepared by Stone Hill Environmental dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, which has determined that the onsite septic system prepared for both the expansion and a new facility on lot seven dash two and seven dash three will not have a deleterious impact upon groundwater quality. Ten, stormwater management plan has been submitted by the applicant that will result in no appreciable net increase of peak runoff exiting the site. Eleven, the applicant is proposing to fill an ex of, in excess of fifteen thousand square foot of wetlands on lot seven dash two and seven dash three, thereby requiring a tier-two permit and mitigation fee of fifty-three thousand dollars. Twelve, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan that provides additional buffering between the proposed parking lots on seven dash two and route one, and will be in compliance with the screening requirements of Land Use Ordinance six point six point five point four. Existing tree stand retention shall be maintained as shown on the approved plans. Thirteen, the applicant proposes to install a comprehensive soil erosion control plan as depicted on the record plan set. Fourteen, the applicant is proposing lighting in the existing parking lot of seven dash three and new exterior lighting on the proposed building and in the parking lot of lot seven dash two. J and M Lighting Design has reviewed this plan and found it in compliance with section five point ten of the Land Use Ordinance. Fifteen, documentation provided by the applicant includes an existing conditions plan, a site plan, a grading utility and layout plan, and a detailed sheet prepared by Paul Gadbois P E and dated November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, with revisions through March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, along with stormwater calculations prepared by Paul Gadbois. Should that date be updated?
Yeah.
To today?
Yeah.
Or I presume today with the landscape plan?
Paul, do you have a type, a date on that?
Everybody's landscaping four twenty-five nineteen.
Four twenty-five nineteen. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Performance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in performance with the criteria section ten point six point four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. One, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. Two, the proposed project has submitted applications to the main DEP for tier-two wetlands operations permits, stormwater permit, and a site location permit. Three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood. Four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs, or the community. Eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Nine, proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that, based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the funa, plenary site plan application of Arundel Machine Tool Company to construct a twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-three square foot expansion to the existing Arundel Machine Tool Company manufacturing facility located on parcel on tax map twelve, lot seven dash three, and a new eleven thousand two hundred square foot manufacturing facility on tax map twelve, lot seven dash two, with associated parking, site improvements, and traffic circulation and connectivity subject to the following conditions. This approval is subject to the issuance of all main DEP permits, including wetlands alteration, stormwater, and site location permits, as well as the required permits from the main department transportation. No work shall be performed until these permits have been supplied to the town plan. The applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of?
Four ninety-four, three eighty.
Yeah, four ninety-four, eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Yeah.
Four hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred thirty dollars in compliance with Land Use Ordinance ten point seven prior to the commencement of construction. All soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of site work, and no site work shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil stabilization mechanisms prescribed herein are made effective. Four, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the code enforcement officer receives a cer- certification from the design engineer that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. So? We have a motion, and then any discussion? I move we, uh, approve the proposed findings of fact, um, and? Motion was made in second, any discussion?
None.
Hearing none?
Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, stay later.
Yes, thank you.
You guys need help with the tables?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She has a table.
One more?
We can still, we're on, you help?
What is your recommendation on that one? So, we, we are, uh, going to have to defer the last item number three of the pending applications to the next meeting.
If you do that, where will she be, when will the next meeting be, and where will she be on the agenda?
Two weeks, yeah, I mean, typically, they'll be right up in the, in the front of this one.
She's here all night for nothing?
Apparently.
Oh, my God. I don't believe it.
Not bad, it's just we, pretty much we're over, almost a half hour over when we normally have to be out of here, so.